As soon as, as soon as 50 people, 51 people are here, John, you have to leave. I think we have 49 now. Good morning. It is 9:30. We recall the meeting to the order of the public participation portion at this time. If you're interested in making comments, fill out the presentation participator's slip and indicate your subject line that you wish to address. And you're welcome to come and tell us what's on your mind. We'll give you three minutes. Please address your comments to me and there will be no response from the council. The first speaker is Brandy White. State your name and address for the record, please.
Brandy White, Deltona. See something, say something, right?
I need your physical address, please.
I prefer not to give my physical address. See something, say something, right? I even dressed in the same attire in hopes that you'll recall who I am and why I'm here. Since this has still yet to be resolved, I'm here to recap and will continue to come here to recap. The city of Deltona went quite rogue and the result was a city manager who used Volusia County Sheriff's Office to impose retaliation and attempted intimidation on its residents. Not once, not twice, but a minimum of three fully documented occasions. One of these brought about a false felony charge. There was no investigation. It went straight to the state attorney's desk, therefore creating the damaging record that I spoke of. I was never charged, never arrested, and was cleared of any wrongdoing by the state attorney's office. Yet, a felony still appears under my name when you do the simplest of background checks like via the clerk of court. It appears legit at first. It looks completely legit. I was given a case number. I was assigned a judge, one I had never seen, never stood in front of, and one that never reviewed any details of my case. Essentially, this public record is not only misleading, but extremely damaging. To his credit, Sheriff Chitwood attended the city workshop on January 27th where he informed the commission that these did indeed occur, that his deputies at times were used as her, and I quote, "personal bodyguards", and that the city manager often overstepped her position and threatened the use of our contract. Let that sink in. At one point, we had a sheriff's office that allowed a rogue city to use them against their own residents in an attempt to silence them. That is the epitome of why we have a constitution. How does any agency designed to serve and protect its citizens allow themselves to be used as weapons? And now, how do I ever trust them again? How do I maintain my respect for them? How can you? How can my children? Sheriff Chitwood standing up, taking responsibility and admitting what he calls "foo-paws", that, that was a huge first step in repairing the lost trust and respect. And I thank him for doing the right thing regarding this matter. What would you do if this happened to you? Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy. Gary Conroy.
Good morning, Chair. Thank you. My name is Gary Conroy. I live at 3107 Queen Palm Drive in the beautiful city of Edgewater. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Waterman's Associations in reference to the beach. We believe the inaction of the council has placed the public and county employees in potential danger. While thousands of spring breakers from all over North America descend into Volusia County for spring break and the rubbery and they have to blow off some steam from their studies wherever they come from, we all, we know that people are still going to come to the beach. As we stand here today, the president is even tightened where he advised no more than groups of 10 should meet. It is the potential, we believe, of these people that might be affected by the coronavirus and bring it back to other places in North America where they will meet people, talk to people, and it's, it's of that public that is so susceptible, the elderly and the people with weak immune systems. So, we ask for some action today. We know it would be unmanageable for nobody on the beach. It can't happen. But we ask the council today to take some action just to ensure that the potential of your employees, which I'm sure are very, very near and dear to your heart and to the public, that we continue to be ever vigilant and do what the CDC and the Public Health Department has asked us to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Gary. John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granby Avenue. One again, coronavirus. I would ask you not to overreact. It does affect me because I'm in that age group. And Kelly, Denise, Johnson, all of us whole folks are more likely to get it than you young kids, all right? You're over 39. Oh, I'm not, I'm not getting it. But we don't want to overreact, all right? You've heard of shouting "fire" in a crowded theater? It really does cause unintended consequences. I live in an area where many of the people rely on the tourists. When our mayor cut down the last 18 hours of Bike Week after they'd been there for 14 days, we're not going to pick it up on the last day. I mean, you could possibly maybe, but it really devastated our economy. And I understand that we go through these things. Being in Florida, I've been through what, two dozen hurricanes? Andrew lasted months. This is just like an extended hurricane. We can get through it. We know there's going to be an end. Most people understand that colds and viruses go during the wintertime and the summer they dissipate. That's why I disagree with the gentleman here. The beach is one of our safest areas. The wind comes from the east. There's very few people living in the Atlantic Ocean, so they're not passing the virus on. Most people are smart enough to spread out on our beach. I walk it every morning. I walk it every afternoon and evening. The crowd for us is in front of the Wyndham. The Hilton, they can go 100 feet between couples. So, it's really, if they're smart enough, they'll spread out. So, do not devastate the beach side any more than it already is. The Ocean Center, which you all own, canceled all their events. What we rely on, you guys are hurting us. Don't add insult to injury. Now, I'm asking you to realize that I know Chitwood has his good points and his bad points. I love him. I talk to him all the time. But it is better for us to have more information than less information. The more we have, the better it is. Nobody talks about SARS, Merck or whatever it was, the H1, 71 or whatever it was. We've had this many times in the past. We have to compare and contrast. I may be aristotelian, but I always ask why? Why are we doing this? There are people who have all kinds of reasons. It's political. Why did we do this? The governor's pushing it. The president's pushing it. The Democratic Party is pushing it. Pelosi wants to tank the economy, whatever. There are always excuses. But we're going to get through this. It will last probably a month and just consider it an extended vacation. But I ask you to make sure that nobody gets hurt financially of any of our employees. I understand that we're going to have to cut back on things, events. So, those people that use our facilities, that are county employees, make sure that they are not hurt by this. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone else that had filled their card out that wished to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public participation meeting and be back here at 10 o'clock for the council meeting.
We'll begin the meeting in less than one minute. For those of you who want to get seated, please make sure there's room between you and the next people sitting there unless you're part of the Department of Health. Thanks, Holly. Okay, good morning. It is 10 o'clock and we will call the St. Patrick's Day Meeting, the Volusia County Meeting, on St. Patrick's Day, March 17th, your order at this time. And we'll have the invocation not given by Pastor Jamie Rader and followed by the pledge. Ask your stand and we'll have the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance, Council. He's here. You just saved me from doing that, so that wouldn't have been my first time, but better to have the professionals to do this.
Good morning, right here.
This would like to thank the council meeting for the privilege in allowing me to be here with you this morning. Let's pray. Dear Lord and most gracious heavenly Father, we're truly thankful for a wonderful day that you've allowed us all to be a part of. So thankful for the sunshine, the air that we breathe, for life itself. Lord, we thank you for your direction that we have through your word and thank you for the great freedom we enjoy in this great country that we live in. Lord, I pray for the councilmen and councilwomen this morning and their families, the example they are setting as they lead and be an example for our community, for our city, as they make decisions concerning our welfare. Dear Lord, I pray for this country and in all of the world and the virus we are dealing with right now, the coronavirus. Dear Lord, we just pray that your hand be upon those who have been infected, that you protect them, you heal them as only you can. Be with the rest of us as we try to deal with this pandemic. We just pray that you take it away, that your hand be seen in all things and you can be glorified through that. Lord, we do thank you most of all for your son and the hope of eternal life we have through him. Lord, help us to see that each and every day that you allow us here is a proving ground for eternity with you. Just ask you to watch over us, God garden directors, in Jesus's name we do pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pastor? Pastor, you have to walk a gauntlet.
But we're not going to shake.
Kinda not a gauntlet. You don't have to shake hands. We'll have the roll call now, please.
Dr. Lowry.
Dr. Lowry. Oh, there he is.
Ms. Post.
Make that note that he is here by audio participation. Okay.
Ms. Post.
Here.
Ms. Wheeler.
Here.
Ms. Denny's.
Ms. Gertman.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
And staff is asked to remove on the consent agenda to remove item I. Does anyone wish to comment on any item on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull item H, as discussed with management, for discussion only.
Have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Chair.
Motion made by Denny's, seconded by Wheeler. Any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimous and we will move to item H, which is the FEN grant application for $500,000.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Manager, we'll talk about this, we did this in the meeting. This is a pretty big deal. We've, our grant revenue is $500,000 from the Florida Inland Navigational District. This is one of the things that our staff does well every day and not just this department, all of our departments, but $500,000. You know, we've been criticized for relying on grants to do the people's business. This is a people's business and is leveraging our dollars in a great return on investment for all the citizens of Volusia County and shows great fiscal responsibility internally. So, Mr. Rucktenwald.
Yeah, I just, exact, thank you. And just to point out that, yeah, the staff is constantly searching for other revenue sources. This is a project that, as you know, you've approved to go forward with and they went ahead though and applied for this grant and that'll help take money that was previously put into the project will then be shifted to other projects. So, it's about how we leverage and how we move things forward and make the money that we have go a lot farther.
Project was this again?
This one here was the Lemon Bluff.
That's right.
Project and the boat ramp and parking, associated parking area.
So, that's the other piece to it. Not only did we, were we successful in leveraging dollars and bringing half a million dollars, it's going to go back into the fund and we can then use that $500,000 for another project and expedite that. So, great job to all the staff and all the hard work and the commitment to the Volusia taxpayers. This really is setting a strong example. Thank you for that.
Okay. Just, and also clarify, while we're very confident about it, this is the application and so we're very competitive knowing our team, so, but I just want to point that out that we don't have the money in hand yet.
You know, to that, we also talked, I think the last meeting, the St. John River Water Management District was here. I had a conversation with our district rep, Abby Johnson, and she is preparing a report for us, for Volusia County and all the grants that we have received from the St. John River Water Management District, especially in comparison to all the other, what, 17 counties in our district. We are still at the top of the list. So, a great work team and I look forward to seeing how those grants come in and how we stack up within the district. It's good work for all our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we got a report about the last four or five years, we've received over $96 million in total grants. Without that, think about where we would be had we not received those. And that's beyond my belief that some out there would say we shouldn't be getting grants, but I think we're doing the community and the taxpayers a favor by utilizing those, leveraging those, which then frees up the money to do other projects that we have in the pipeline to do.
That's exactly correct. And what I am proud of is that we really go after them for projects that we've decided to do or things that we need. We're not going after a grant and then creating something to match it, which is the other way around, which I think is, of course, the correct way. And sometimes that means we're waiting in line, we're waiting for the right time to strike when our projects are shovel-ready and that way, sometimes we work with the cities to say, this is a good time for you to grab a grant because ours is going to come next year and that type of thing. We do that very well, especially in the water world.
Okay, with that, we'll move to item 2A, which is the confirmation of appointment of Helga Van Eckert as, oh, Captain.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Kevin Captain, interim director of Community Information. Item 2A is the confirmation of appointment of Helga Van Eckert as Division Director of Economic Development. County manager George Rucktenwald will provide Ms. Van Eckert's background.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Honorable Counselors, it was my pleasure that I want to recommend Helga Van Eckert today for confirmation. Ms. Van Eckert brings a wealth of talent and experience in the economic development field, nearly 24 years of governmental experience, but she also brings seven years in the private sector and you know I like to look for that kind of combination and she definitely has that. Her mix of experience and her track record of results, that includes business recruitment and numerous successful economic development and redevelopment projects, which I think are very important, and public, private partnerships make Ms. Van Eckert, I think, ideally suited as we move our economic development efforts forward. We've talked about, and I know with the council, about making sure that in addition to the more high-profile stuff we've done, that we also do a lot more work and we will continue to do a lot more work in small business development and in the small business field. And I think that's going to become critical, absolutely critical, given our state of affair right now. So, Ms. Van Eckert has a bachelor's degree in bio-environmental engineering. May need you on that too. From Rutgers University, she served many leadership roles, including the governor's appointee to the Northeast Florida Regional Planning Council and the Northeast Regional Representative to the Florida Economic Development Council. So, I would ask for confirmation today for Ms. Van Eckert.
Ms. Wheeler.
I would like to make a motion to, for the confirmation of appointment of Helga E. Van Eckert as Director of Economic Development.
Second.
Motion made by Wheeler, seconded by Gertman. Any discussion, Ms. Post.
Hi, good morning.
Welcome.
So, I'm, you have no idea how excited I am to have you.
Right back at you.
And I'm looking forward to having some really good conversations with you. Since I've been in this role, I've been really trying to stress the importance of focusing on our actual, the citizens who live here in Volusia County and the people that own businesses currently and seeing what we can actually do to assist them and move them forward. So, really looking forward to having those conversations with you. So, welcome and I look forward to seeing, seeing what you can do to take us out of the box a little bit.
Thank you.
Ms. Gertman.
I just want to ditto what Councilwoman Post said, but I think in this environment that we're in, retention and how we're going to go forward after this crisis is certainly something that will need your level of expertise. So, thank you and it's good timing.
If I could, I'd just like to thank all of you. I'm very excited about this opportunity. You have an amazing team here already and I'm just thrilled to be a part of it. And I do believe that going forward with what we're going through today, it's more important than ever that we focus on the retention and expansion of existing businesses in the community, so.
Good to hear.
So, good things are coming, I think.
I'm happy you decided to go south, come south. I think we've met by chance, at a chance meeting and maybe you can work on that particular one that we were working on or trying to work on, convince them that they could go across the street and be happy. So, she knows what that means. I met her at Flagler County briefly. So, thank you, welcome aboard and we look forward to you filling, you being that tool in the toolbox that's going to make the difference. So, thank you for being here.
Thank you. I know it's going to be great to be part of the team.
Welcome. Remove item 2B, which is. Need a motion to approve the use of NASPO contract for Cisco data communication products and services. George. Sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
I was getting ahead.
First off, I apologize for this getting down late, but there was a big reason. This was actually going to go on the following meeting, but with, contained within this is a large increase in the amount of licenses that we can use for virtual computing and which may become very important as we go forward. So, because of that, they came to me and asked, is there any way we could move this up? And I said, absolutely, this is, I think, something that we need as we analyze our operations and look at more telecommuting type jobs. Brian, where Brian?
Brian Whiting, IT Director of Volusia County. Essentially, to respond to some rapidly changing threats, we need to up our cybersecurity game. We'll be acquiring industry-leading software from Cisco Systems and hardware also from Cisco to help accomplish this. This agreement will allow us a very rapid expansion, as George just said, of VPN technology and allow just over 2,000 county workers to connect remotely to the computer network. The staff is in fact working diligently on the back half of that to get it ready to receive them. The agreement also includes several new cybersecurity products that are going to improve our overall security posture and it does include some network equipment, essentially beefier firewalls. We're finding that attacks are getting more sophisticated and we need deeper and deeper inspection of all the traffic that comes in over the internet and we need some beefier equipment to help do that so that it doesn't interfere too much with the speed of our internet connections.
Ms. Wheeler.
Move approval to use the NASPO contract for Cisco data communications product and services.
Second.
Motion made by Wheeler, seconded by Post. Any further discussion? Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimous and.
Mr. Chair. I wanted, just to make sure, we just got a note here on item 02A. We heard a motion and a second, but I didn't hear, do we have the vote for?
Well, was there?
Maybe just to be safe, we could go ahead.
Okay, was there any objection to the confirmation of Helga Van Eckert as Director of Economic Development? Hearing no objection, the motion passes unanimous.
Just double checking, make sure for you.
Way to adapt and respond already. Good job.
And if it's there, you're doubly assured. If not, we'll move on. The item two has been marked out, right? The presentation on that, we'll move to item three.
Yeah, item three is an amendment and restatement of our Human Resource Classification and Compensation Plan. And basically, this deals with, first off, the fact that we don't have a tax collector in our plan, so in anticipation of Amendment 10, that adds that. It also blinds the name of our fire, the director of our fire department up with its name of Fire Rescue. And then it also, years ago, when we did some combining, when I explained earlier that I was going to make sure we had a separate facilities director and a fleet director, this reinstates the pay classification for the fleet director as well. Those are the highlights and it does not change the pay, it just establishes them back into the program under the existing levels that we have today.
Okay. We need a motion, Mr. Johnson.
I make a motion for the amendment and restatement of the 2019, 2020 Human Resources Classification and Compensation Plan.
Motion made by Johnson, seconded by Wheeler. Any discussion? Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimous. We'll move to item four. George.
Yes, this is going to be Clay.
Good morning, Clay Urban, Director of Growth and Resource Management. Before you today is an amendment to our impact fee ordinance. It affects all of our impact fees that we charge. It's pertaining to the administrative fee that we charge for processing anything associated with impact fees. Per changes in state law, we can only now charge actual costs. Staff has looked at the direct and indirect costs that were associated with it and so therefore, the ordinance has been changed to strike the automatic 3% to reflect only actual cost. The following item, Agenda Five, is a resolution where we will be addressing what the actual costs are and how we will be administering that in the future. I do have to point out that unfortunately this morning, we did observe one omission on page 4-5 of your agenda packet. There's an impact fee land use category noted as manufacturing and it's got the number struck through it, but it does not have the replacement fee. That correct replacement fee would be $1,546. If, as part of the motion, if you so choose to make a recommendation of approval, if you could please incorporate that change into the ordinance so that that way we have a correct fee for the manufacturing land use.
What item was that? What was it? And it was page four?
Page 4-5 of the ordinance and you'll. Page 4-5 of the ordinance, and you'll see down there on, for manufacturing.
Okay.
It says $1,592. That struck out, but there's no replacement fee typed in there, and that needs to be $1,546.
Okay. Have a motion to reflect that change on that item, page 4-5, to reflect the number to be 1,546. Ms. Denny's.
Mr. Chair, move approval of ordinance 2020-8 amending Chapter 70 impact fees and proportionate share to ensure consistency with the 2019 Florida Impact Fee Act.
Motion made by Denny, seconded by Wheeler. Any discussion? I'll just make one comment briefly, and that is, we are doing this because of the law, the regulation that came down from the state. Otherwise, we would not be, but they tell us what to do, and we have to follow. Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimous, and we'll move to item five.
Good morning, Clay Urban, Director of Growth and Resource Management. Again, this is a quick resolution. It establishes the fee schedule that we will utilize in implementation of our impact fee. This will be an annual modification so that that way we are truly capturing the actual
Ms. Wheeler. Ms. Denny's.
Okay. Mr. Chair, move approval of resolution reestablishing the fee to be charged for the administration of the impact fee ordinance.
Second.
Motion made by Denny, seconded by Gertman. Any discussion? Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimous, and we'll move to item six. And this is a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing portion at this time, and Clay.
Good morning, once again, Clay Urban, Director of Growth and Resource Management. This is a direction that staff received from the county council regarding how we process liens associated with demolition orders issued by the CLCA. If y'all remember, there was a request by a property owner to assist with some of the costs so that that way they could dispose of the property in a proper manner. County council directed staff to come back and revise our ordinance to be consistent with the procedures and policies we established for that particular case. That's what this does.
Okay, Ms. Post.
As it makes no sense for the liens to be higher than the actual property value, I move approval of the ordinance amending Chapter 58, Article 3, by establishing procedures for production of liens arising out of orders of demolition of the contractor's licensing construction appeals, CLCA board.
Motion made by Post, seconded by Johnson. Ms. Denny's.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a perfect example, too, of this council responding to a citizen that came before us during public participation time and acting very proactively. So, Mr. Manager, I want to thank you for directing your staff to fix this for our citizens, because when we have, and I know that there's more, but this particular one was one that was the impetus for this, and he showed hardship, real hardship, and our ordinance at the time was too constraining and restraining for him to do what he needed to do with his own property. So thank you for that. I think, again, is a great example of this council responding to when our citizens come before us and amending our ordinances and reducing the hardship. So great work, again. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimous, and we will go to item seven. I'm surprised that this is still here, Brian, but I guess it is, so...
Okay, good morning, Mr. Chair, County Council, I'm Brian Rothwell, Activity Project Manager. We have one, item number seven, a sponsorship request from Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University for their annual Blue and Gold Gala, which was supposed to happen on April 17th. I spoke with a representative yesterday, and it is being postponed for a later date, an amount of $1,500. But it has not been canceled, just postponed.
Okay, well, should we wait till there's a date?
No, let's commit.
Okay, well, Ms. Wheeler.
Move approval of the sponsorship request from Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University Annual Blue and Gold Gala on whatever date it comes up with, in the amount of 1,500.
Yes.
Motion made by Wheeler, seconded by Denny's. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimous, and we will move to item eight.
Item eight is a sponsorship request from Community Healing Project Incorporated for the community celebration for better families, better community, which will happen on May 16th, an amount of $1,500. And I did speak with them, and they are still planning to have their event.
Okay.
I make a motion.
Motion made for sponsorship of Community Healing Project, Community Celebration, Better Family, Better Community by Ms. Gertman, seconded by Wheeler. Any discussion? Any objection to the motion? Hearing no objection, the motion passes unanimous, and we'll move to item nine.
And item nine is a sponsorship request from Volusia County Sheriff's Foundation for their third annual salute to the Stars Gala on May 1st, an amount of $1,500, and this one is still on for May 1st.
Move approval?
Motion made by Post, seconded by Gertman to approve the Volusia County Sheriff's Foundation Annual Salute to the Stars Gala. Any discussion? Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimous. Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, honorable members of council and staff, Kevin Captain, Interim Director of Community Information. So for the events, the list that you have, unfortunately, in light of COVID-19, many, if not most, of all of our events have been provisionally canceled. The Public Works Northeast Facility Groundbreaking, we held that release last week in anticipation of that, so that's also been scrubbed. And regrettably, so, too, have the census events. So unfortunately, any group more than 10 than we have certainly canceled. However, with that said, there is some positive. So in Volusia Magazine, we have a new feature this month, and that includes features on the Drug Court, Nutrition Month, and the Summer Food Program. And last but not least, Volusia Today was this morning. We had Jason Brady, Director of Volusia County EMS, who spoke, actually for the whole show, we spoke a lot about the improvements that came up in the February council last year. Some of those improvements are on the county, and we also talked about recruitment. This was a great show, and he was great to be on. And for next week, some of this might change a little bit, but we're going to have some discussions on summer camp scholarships and the river cleanup. So with that, there's still information getting out from Community Information despite COVID-19. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Yes.
Actually, Mr. Captain, if I don't call you Captain, Mr. Captain, how about just Kevin?
Well, my wife's the Admiral.
There you go. So considering the time that we're in, these unusual times, I think now more than ever, social media and our electronic presence is going to be really important to our citizens. And I mean, you take a look at the consent agenda, all the different departments, we're not going down because we've got more than 10 in a department. We're still doing the day-to-day operations for our citizens. So if we could really enhance and focus on getting that message out to our citizens, even each department, what's going on even in a day-to-day, Mr. Manager? Because this is what we do well for Volusia County and all of our 16 cities. So if we could just ramp up the social media presence, I think that would calm a lot of our citizens and let them know that our engineers are still on, you know, doing what they do in public works and beach safety. All of our departments are doing what they need to be doing.
Thank you, Ms. Denny's. Kate Sark, our marketing specialist in PIO, is taking the lead on that. In fact, she's meeting with Mr. Judge at the EOC later this afternoon to talk specifically about social media. And Mr. Reckonwald and Ms. Conshion and I have been in continuous contact about how we can ramp up those efforts for social media. So I welcome the comments, and I look forward to filling your feeds on Facebook with more information.
And we'll share it. Thank you so much.
Who did you say is taking over that lead?
Kate Sark.
Okay. I know that if you look at, I follow Daytona Beach's site at times and their website, their page. They post things as they're happening. I think sometimes we are maybe a little bit late on some things, so the sooner some of those things can be out there, the faster they are. You know that the printed media has even had to do that, and even the broadcast media has had to go to utilizing those websites to get the messages out, because people don't want to wait till the next day to hear something or see something, so, nor do we. So appreciate it.
So noted, Mr. Chair. We'll proceed with a Road Runner response.
We could just call him KC, you know, and the Sunshine Man. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Oh, I see another name coming up.
We'll move to item 11. This is to appoint three people to the TDC, and we have three people that are listed on here. All three fit the categories that they must meet, so we'll take those in any order that you may choose. Ms. Wheeler. We have to do these individually? I'll ask you again, Marcy. We have to do these individually? We can't do them collectively? You prefer that. I prefer the other way, but I'll do it your way. Ms. Wheeler.
I move to appoint Costa Magulis.
Okay.
Through the Tourism Department Development Council.
He satisfies the agreement of a person involved in the tourism industry and demonstrated an interest in that. So any objection to his nomination? Hearing no objection. It is so done. We'll move to the next one. Ms. Wheeler.
I have one.
Oh, sorry about that, Fred.
That's okay.
Go ahead.
Just wanted to let you still here.
Good, thank you.
I want to pick the Ramos category, too.
Okay. Victor Ramos has been nominated by Mr. Lowry. Any objection to that nomination? Hearing none, that so stands as well. And Ms. Wheeler.
Final one, Ruth Trager.
Ruth Trager.
To category three.
Who satisfies the nomination of a representative from a city. Any objection to that nomination? Hearing none, that motion also passes unanimous. That takes care of item 11. We'll move to item 12, which is appointments to the VAG, VAB, Value Adjustment Board. Ms. Denny's.
Mr. Chair, do you appoint the two council members? Or I think we, as a council, appoint and nominate and appoint.
Council does that.
Okay, so I'm going to nominate Barb Gertman. You're welcome.
She says she needed one more thing to do, so Barb Gertman has been nominated.
And I'm also going to nominate Ben Johnson. There you go.
Ben Johnson has been nominated. Barb Gertman, any objection to Barb Gertman being nominated to the...
No.
Value Adjustment Board? Hearing none, Barb Gertman is confirmed as that nomination. Ben Johnson, any objection to Ben Johnson being nominated? No. No objection. Hearing no objection, Ben Johnson is so nominated as well. And now then we have a citizen's appointment, a citizen. Ms. Denny's. I'm saying that because you're up. Or not? You're not.
I'll move it, well, there's only one person applied, so I will... Do we have to do that now? Are there more applications, Marcy?
No more.
There's no more, and we're up against a time frame?
I think it starts April 1st.
Okay, well then, I nominate Cory Moore as a citizen to the, what are we looking at?
Value Adjustment Board.
The VAB, yes.
Any objection to Cory Moore being nominated for the Value Adjustment Board? Any discussion? Any objection to the nomination? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimous. We will move to the public participation portion at this part, and not surprising, we have one, John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granby Avenue. Just two things. One, I want to keep in front of you the Juvenile Assessment Center.
John, either pull those mics toward you or speak a little out, just the, pull them down, just a little, there you go, maybe.
Good thing, I'm sure.
Thank you.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granby Avenue. I want to remind you, to bring before you, the Juvenile Adjustment Center, that the county put as much as they can and keep it in front of you. I asked Ms. Post to get individually involved in this. Chief Chitwood said it was a great idea. I've researched it. Our police chief says it's a great idea. From what I understand, we have the largest community in need for this center, so I'm asking you to get behind it and make it the best it can be. Secondly, and again, another issue, is maintenance. The Dolphin Center, it's getting a look a bit raggedy, and the landscaping around the ocean center is still, because we have a lot of people generally hitting the ocean center and having it not in its best shape. It makes it look a little, I mean, because the ocean center is dynamite. If you ever walk through it, it is fantastic compared to even Miami Beach's ocean center. So I'm asking you to upgrade all of our facilities, especially the public restrooms on the beach. Women, whenever realtors talk about women in houses, the first thing they look at is kitchen, the second one is the bathroom. So most of our female tourists will, at one point, hit a bathroom. I ask that we keep them up as nicely as we possibly can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. And before we go to the comments, George, on the, the next one I think you're going to bring forward is our open discussion on the COVID-19 issue and where we go from that. I need to get a water. Let's take about five minutes before we get, because there's probably going to be a lengthy discussion. So we, you can stay, you can stay there, Fred, but we're going to recess for five minutes. We'll be, start back at 10:40. Recession for five. Okay, it is 10:41. We'll go ahead and reconvene the county council meeting. Give just a second for everyone to get situated. Fred, are you there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just checking to make sure. Ben, are you here? Ben's here. Fred's here. Ms. Post? Is here. I, yeah, understand that. So we all present and accounted for. George, you want to have Patricia?
Yes, let me get started. I got a few different folks that I'd like to have speak to you guys today and update you. And then we'll probably have a conversation on some decisions that have to be made. So let's start off with Patricia Boswell from the Department of Health. I'd like to have her come up and give a report of her and Holly Smith.
Good morning. Chair Kelly, members of the council, county manager. The Florida Department of Health has been asked to provide a brief update on COVID-19 for Volusia County Council this morning. I want to start by just acknowledging the outstanding work that is being done at the county health department in Volusia County by a group of dedicated and committed employees. We are working seven days a week. We have employees that are working 14, 15-hour days. So I did want to take a moment to acknowledge all the hard work that's being done here. So I'll start with the status of the COVID-19 in Florida and Volusia County. Then I'll ask one of my leaders, Holly Smith, to join me to provide some information on our epidemiological efforts that's going on. So it's been two weeks since I stood before you to talk for the first time about coronavirus, now known as COVID-19. A lot has changed. And as I said there, then, it was a very evolving, emerging, and changing situation. Last night at 5:00 PM, there were 160 total Florida cases. This includes 142 positive cases of Florida residents and 18 positive cases of non-Florida residents. That report that was issued at 5:00 PM last night from the Florida Department of Health also announced that there are seven total cases of COVID-19 in Volusia County. All of these cases are either linked to international travel or a close contact of a case, of a known case.
Could you repeat that, just in case anyone listening didn't hear that?
So we have seven total cases of COVID-19 in Volusia County. All of those cases are either from international travel related or are linked as a close contact of a known case.
Okay.
And Holly's going to go into really good detail to help understand what that means from an Epi standpoint.
Okay, thank you.
All right? Currently, we do not have any community spread in Volusia County. Okay?
Yeah. Explain what community spread means, because some people are misunderstanding that.
Yeah, Holly's going to explain that.
Okay, okay, we'll just wait.
But basically, we can trace back where the exposure happened.
Okay.
But she's going to give you really great details to understand the whole idea of contact tracing and what a case is and whatnot. So with that, I'll ask Holly to come up and speak.
Good segue.
Good morning. Holly Smith, Communications Manager and Government Liaison for the Florida Department of Health here in Volusia County. Thank you for the opportunity to clarify some of the misinformation that's out there and provide some background and maybe clarification on points that are not made publicly, just because they're not easy to put into a 10-second soundbite or into a, you know, article in the paper. So we're here to provide that information and answer questions afterwards, if you'd like.
Okay.
And I want to start with Mrs. Boswell. When she talks about the great epidemiological staff and support staff at the Department of Health, we are doing our efforts under her leadership and under the guidance from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. They tell us how things should be done, and that guidance has changed from when we started two weeks ago. So what I'm going to give you today is the guidance that is there as of late last night. I think I checked it this morning to see if anything had changed. But if you recall, initially, it was China that was people who would travel to China, and now it's a big swath. So the guidance is constantly being updated. So I'll start with the clarification between what community spread is. And there's been some confusion over person-to-person spread versus community spread. Person-to-person is how this virus and many respiratory viruses spread. I cough, you get it, I spread it from me to you. We know that's person-to-person. There's been some confusion in local media that misplaced that word with community spread. We don't want to hear that, because that is one we can't trace a case back. If you know I gave it to you, that's person-to-person spread. But if you haven't and we can't trace it back through contact tracing, that means we have community spread if we have several of those cases in our geographic area where we also know that we have others that are linked. Does that make sense without having to use epidemiological terms?
We have no.
We have. We do not, at this point, have any evidence of community spread. As Mrs. Boswell said, all seven of our announced cases have been linked back. Four of them were to that Nile tour and the. And or associated with that. And two others were a different international tour.
Ms. Post?
Or a trip, not a tour, but a trip.
So how are we coming up with those numbers? And who's being tested? And how are they being tested?
I'm going to get to that. So the focus that the Florida Department of Health has for this virus is to stop the spread, and we do that three ways. The first way is to identify people most at risk of spreading the virus or contracting the virus. So there's criteria that does that. Secondly, once we've identified those, then we test them and then we isolate them or test and isolate at the same time. Sometimes they're isolated before they're tested, but those are the three things that we do to stop the spread. So the CDC has created guidelines to help us know who are those risk factors. And then they're also used to define who gets tested by the health department or the hospitals, because that's a. There's a private way to get tested and a public way. This would be the public way. That's very confusing, so that's going to be the last thing I talk about once I lay the groundwork. So the criteria for the public testing is what you're hearing, those most at risk. The first thing is you have to be symptomatic. You have to have a fever and symptoms of lower respiratory illness. That's cough or difficulty breathing. So you have to be symptomatic and you have to fit one of six criteria. The first one being a close contact with a known case. If I have it and then Patricia has it and we know she got it from me, she's a close contact of a case that we knew about. Makes sense? Okay, I'm going to explain how we find those close contacts after I go through the whole list. The second is a history of international travel or on a cruise. Third criteria is history of travel to or from a geographic region with widespread community transmission. That is not Volusia County. That is parts of Washington, California, Oregon, New York, and others could be added to the list as we move on. You've probably seen those stories in other states where they're having more restrictive movements, and that's where they're having the widespread community spread. The fourth criteria is anyone who's hospitalized with acute lower respiratory illness. Now, this is in the hospital. The doctors have worked them up and cannot figure out what has caused that. So they don't have the flu, they don't have other respiratory illnesses, and doctors are suspicious, so then they would test. And then number five and six were added yesterday. These are people who are most at risk of poor outcomes if they were to become infected. The first would be someone over age 65 who has chronic health conditions. And criteria number six is the immunocompromised. That can be people who are going through cancer treatments, people who have autoimmune disease and are on immunosuppressant drugs and the like. People whose immune response would not be enough to handle the virus well. So they are at risk of poor outcomes. So those are the six criteria. Have to be symptomatic and fit one of those to be tested through the state lab. And again, there's two, two ways to be tested. We're going to talk about both, but that's for the state lab. So let me back up and talk about how we. How do we know where this virus is going? I'm going to use an example of Patricia and I. Let's say I took the Nile cruise and I'm positive, and Patricia's my coworker, and we go to lunch and we do meetings together, and then I come down sick and they test me positive. Our epidemiology staff gets with that person immediately and isolates me and puts a mask on me and tells me I'm not leaving the home for 14 days. Or and until I test negative twice after my symptoms have gone away. Then they ask. And they give me a lot more guidance on not spreading the disease. But then they will ask me, who have you been around since, you know, in that period where I was shedding the virus? And I have to think back. Let's see, I went to work and I sat in a meeting. And they want to know not who was in the room with me. They want to know who was a close contact defined by the CDC, which is within six feet and at least three minutes. Long enough for that virus for you to have an increased risk of the virus. So that's not a huge list. It's a defined list of people. So if she and I go to church and we always sit in the same seat because we're friends, you know who's around you. And I can say I was at church and Mr. Kelly was in front of me and Patricia was behind me, and these people were on the side. So our epidemiology staff then reaches out to those close contacts, and they say you've been exposed by someone who's a positive case of coronavirus. They don't use the name. And they say your instructions are to stay home and self-isolate. We're going to give you a thermometer. You need to check your temperature twice a day. If you notice that you have a temperature, immediately put your mask on and call us. And then we go through the more questioning and likely they'll be tested. And if they came back positive, the cycle starts again. Where have you been? Who are your close contacts? And if they've been isolated for 14 days, that list of the opportunity to have a lot of spread has been diminished because they've been under that isolation. Does that make sense? Yes? Okay. So if you want to see how close contact tracing goes from this long list to a smaller list, there is a document on Volusia County's website. It's volusia.org/coronavirus. And the document's under Resources. It's called Contact Tracing. And it's an infographic that just shows what epidemiologists do. They do this for infectious diseases, all infectious diseases, to find out where you got it and where it's going.
Holly?
Yes.
But so if. Is some. I'm still a little confused as to the possibility of not testing someone.
Yes. So the testing piece, that's the next where we're going.
Right, but if you're listing out that group and you're saying, these are the only people that we're testing?
There's a whole nother side to it. I'm only giving you the public health lab side. So going into testing, you're hearing a lot about anybody who wants to. Anybody who wants to be tested can get testing. Well, here's the way it works. If you fit the criteria, the public health laboratory, the Department of Health, working with hospitals, hospitals can do this as well on their own, will collect the samples from you. It's. I don't need to go, I guess, go through that process, but we'll collect the samples, and then we ship them to the Bureau of Public Health Labs or the state lab. There's three state labs that actually conduct the tests in the state of Florida. That's for that very specific focused criteria, because we know they're at highest risk. If you are concerned and you think you want to have a test because maybe you were on a cruise and you're just. There's a lot of people who are just nervous right now. They might have colds or flu and they want to be tested. They have a route, too. They call their doctor. And their doctor has the same guidance and looks at the bottom and says, okay, I'm going to do my medical workup, and I'm going to decide if it's needed to step further or if it looks more like flu or other things. And the doctor then can decide to take the samples in the office and send them to a private lab. So it's a different lab. It's a private sector thing that the Department of Health does not get into. That's the private sector piece. Does that help?
I hear you.
Okay, so we have people who are saying, I can't get tested. Well, they're probably going to their primary care and finding out that they don't fit that criteria. That's currently the guidance from the CDC, and that's what we're following nationwide because they're the experts in infectious disease.
But so my worry then is that people are not getting tested, that are showing symptoms, but they are not getting tested because they themselves can't, you know. I mean, we have people from Bike Week, we have people from, you know. I've been to Walmart, I've been to, you know, all of these different places. I can't tell you who I was within six feet from for three minutes in line.
You don't have to.
Or any of that.
It's the person who's been the positive case who tells us where they've been. And then the epidemiologist assess the risk of where they've been. So if someone said, I was at the Volusia County. And I hate to do this to you, but I was at the Volusia County Council Meeting on Tuesday, then they're going to say, well, Holly, I need to know where you sat. I need to know who was within six feet of you for at least three minutes. Right now, only a couple people.
But it's only those people that you are confirming as positive that you are branching out from, correct?
The confirm. Well, no. There are. When, yeah. When you have a positive case is when the contact tracing begins. Now, there's also those international travelers and cruise travelers who have to stay home for 14 days and self-isolate. They get the same guidance as those close contacts. Watch your symptoms, check your temperature, call us if you have any issues. And then they would fall in that category if they became positive. So it's very similar guidance for different groups. Did that answer your question? I will tell you that we're having people who are asking. And our call load has, you know, we've opened a call center because people are calling because they want to be tested. And they don't fit the criteria for those focused, high-risk groups. And they're not hearing the message that they need to call their primary care provider. Or maybe their primary care provider doesn't do that in the office. They need.
I think a lot of primary care doctors are not.
Let's do this. Let's stop asking questions. Let's let you go through. If you write your questions down, because if we keep asking questions and having inner discussions, we'll never get through this. But if you have.
I think it's important. I mean, I have specific questions, and this is very.
And she's covering two of them that you asked before she got to them. So let's let her go through, write them down. And I know I started it. I apologize. But I thought it was important that you stress what you stressed. It was not a question. It was just a stress so that people understood the issue. So if we can, let's just hold our questions until then, because this is going to be a long discussion today. We're just beginning. And if we keep having discussions and then you don't understand, or I don't understand, or whatever may happen, we'll never get there. So go ahead and go through. And if you have questions, we'll go cover those later.
Okay. To muddy the waters just a little bit more. So we have the public health laboratory that tests things that come from the health department and the hospital for those high-risk people. And then we have the private sector labs, the LabCorp and Quest and the like, where doctors can take their samples and send there. The hospital can also use that route if they have a patient that doesn't fit this criteria. They can take the samples and ship them that way, too. So they can go to both. And the final question that I got a lot of yesterday was when. And the final question that I got a lot of yesterday was, when are we going to have mobile labs? The Department of Health ESF-8 or Emergency Support Function 8, which is the lead agency for the effort here in the state, is working with our local hospital systems to support those efforts. I don't know if it's a drive-through, but I know Halifax Health told me today that they are now opening an ancillary facility outside their Daytona Beach campus where they are triaging people due to the increased numbers who are coming into the emergency department wanting to be tested. And they're trying to triage them there and take care of them outside without infecting people the inside and also allowing the people who need emergency care that aren't there for testing to get in. Yeah, that's a big piece. And they told me that later in the week they will be opening Port Orange in Deltona, but they didn't give me a date, they just said later in the week, they're rolling it out as they go. So the health department supports the hospitals with any needs that they may have, whether it's supplies or things. And private practices, we're getting a lot of calls from them asking for supplies like the swabs and the viral media, that they need to do the, to take the samples. And those requests are not handled by the health department locally, they're handled by the state EOC and that is run through your EOC. So your EOC is really supporting this effort quite a bit and I'll leave the rest of that to Mr. Judge.
Okay. Now, if you want to ask questions of Holly, Ms. Gertman.
Are we seeing any limited access to testing?
I don't think so. You're, you're, you're hearing people who want to be tested who can't get it, that's either because from us they don't meet that high-risk criteria or their doctors evaluated them and determined that it doesn't look like what they need to look for.
Right, in the, in the media it sounds as though there's a need for testing for those who fit the criteria and the testing's not available, so is that not accurate?
Not here in Volusia. I can tell you that we have met the demand and right now we have supplies to meet the current demand for testing that meets that criteria that we are doing. And then as we need more, we work through Tallahassee to backfill those supplies.
Regarding private labs, do you know if persons are being sent to LabCorp or Quest to be tested or are they tested at the physician's office?
Thank you.
And then those specimens are sent?
Yes, thank you. That's a point of clarification that has been difficult to get out because usually when you, your doctor orders a lab, they give you a piece of paper or they fax it in for you, go to the lab and the lab pulls your blood sample or whatever it is they need from you. That is not the way this is working. The labs do not want people coming to the lab, they will turn you away. On their website, whichever lab you go to, they have information that tells you to call your doctor. And for physicians, if physicians need to know what to do, same thing, website has the information for physicians, they pull the samples in the office, in the medical doctor's office, and they're shipped directly to wherever it is that Quest or LabCorp processes those labs. So they bypass that storefront altogether.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for the question.
Suzanne.
Holly, if you said this, can you repeat it or can you clarify if you have a possible exposure to a person who's been tested positive and you have not exhibited any fever or symptoms, what more happens to you?
So you're talking about a close contact or possible exposure because you were in the room with me or do you mean a higher risk exposure because you're my close contact?
Close contact.
Okay, so if you're defined to be a close contact, we get with you immediately upon receiving the private test from whoever was your contact, which if I'm the, the positive test, we get with you immediately, once you're identified. And we give you instructions which are, here's a mask, here's a thermometer, take your temperature twice a day. If your temperature rises, if you, you know, if you develop a fever, we want you to call us immediately and put the mask on. And from that moment that we first see you and hand you all these things, it's 14-day self-isolation, stay home. It's not social distancing, it is 14 days, stay home.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for the question.
Ms. Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got a kind of a different question here. I was asked by several different professional organizations, but I'll just use one as a real estate appraisal. Their question is, how can they be notified if they go into a home that may have somebody quarantined or self-quarantined? So where does the notification piece for the rest of the citizens carrying out their day-to-day activities and their workday, I mean, these are some very real issues.
Of the positive case, the positive cases are giving very strict guidance upfront. You're a positive case, you need to wear, unless you live alone, you need to wear a mask at all times when you're home and keep yourself isolated from other, other members of your family. They're giving the sanitation guidance.
No, that's not my question.
Well, no, but what I'm saying is to distance yourself from others, you wouldn't have someone come into your home because you had that isolation, you're in isolation. So you wouldn't be inviting anyone new into your home. But I can address the EMS notification if you want me to go there.
Please, because their concern is, they go in to do a home appraisal, they go in to do other home services, there's other home service.
Right.
There's some collateral damage here.
Yes.
In the flow of information and what can be released and what can't be released. And I think we really need to reassure those just doing their day-to-day jobs that where they're going to that particular site is safe.
So Florida statute, and I have the number if you want me to look it up, it's a long one and there's a period somewhere in the middle of it, limits the, or really restricts information being made public, that's part of an active investigation, an active epidemiological investigation. That's what this is. It's just like any other infectious disease, we do an investigation on it and until it is closed, you do not get information other than, we can give out age and we can give out sex in a, in a broad geographic area. The reason being is we need people who are infected by a disease to feel comfortable that we're going to protect their private information and keep them anonymous so that they'll come forward and self-report. If people start feeling like they, their information is not being kept private or we're not protecting them, they may not come forward and they may not follow the advice that we're given and we won't have a clear picture of, of the extent of the disease in the community. So that's part of the intent of the law, but it is very clear, and there's also a Florida Administrative Code that goes with it that restricts bits and pieces, it gets even more in depth of testing. So that is why the information is not coming out. However, the state, the governor, the surgeon general, all concerned about the protection of public safety, whether it's police, fire, EMS. If they are called to a home of a positive case or someone who's just a close contact and being monitored, that address is in the CAD system so that they know to use protective equipment when they get there. Because they're entering in the home and they're in that close space of, of the person.
As it, as it should be. I understand that and absolutely agree with that. So while we're protecting our public protection workers, what about our civilian population that, I mean, not for nothing, I think there, there's, at what point do we risk, do our workers inadvertently risk exposure if it's not exposed to them that this house or this person or there's somebody in that, in or on that property?
That's a good question. It's above my pay grade, it's above any pay grade here at the county level because those are state decisions. But there's also some responsibility on the patients and the close contacts to avoid that contact with people.
It's just a tough one.
Yes, it is, isn't it?
That started coming in last night and I'm like, oh my.
To make that clear, I think that that's an important point though, that it is the responsibility of the affected person in that home, so you would not invite your cable man in if that, if you've been tested positive. So there is that responsibility that, you know, they're given, that, you know, you're not inviting anyone into your house.
It's quarantined.
It's quarantined. So they have to say that. Now, whether they do or don't, we all know that's, that could be an issue, but they certainly would be the person then responsible for that transmission if they do that. So the idea is, you know, they're supposed to isolate, and isolate means you don't invite anybody into the house. So, "Sure, do your property appraiser come by, I'm sorry you cannot come in today," you know, "you know, I'm not feeling well." That's all they have to say really at that point, everyone needs to respect that, so.
Okay, Ms. Wheeler.
Yeah, so I just want to clarify, I mean, are you allowed to tell, to say it's so many in this city or whatever, because I am?
No ma'am. And I would like to clarify.
Please do.
Information that's being published, and I've had a lot of conversations with one media outlet that published that there are 27 potential cases in Volusia County. It's not exactly accurate. I mean, at the time there were only five cases, right now there are seven, so there are seven cases. We may be monitoring another 20, but they're just under monitoring, a lot of those people never develop symptoms and they are released from self-monitoring. Or if they develop symptoms and they're tested and they test negative, then, you know, it was something else. So it's, we're trying to really keep things in an, in an accurate, honest and forthright picture, but we do have this law that confines us to what the health department can release. So just understand that that was something that's, that as far as I know, has never been done, providing the information to EMS and it only pops up when the call is run, when it's, you know, when, when an officer or a firefighter or EMS person gets the call and that's for their protection.
Unless someone goes in and asks for that information, which is another source, which no one is trying to withhold, everyone's trying to be transparent. There's probably 530,000 potential cases in Volusia County, that means all of us.
Wow.
So to say, to make a headline that there are 23 potential cases, all of us are potential cases. So it's not accurate, but it, but to use those numbers to scare people or to provide people, I'm not, I don't feel any safer or anymore at danger knowing that there's five here, six there, two there, because if I've come in contact with them, I've come in contact and I've been contacted, someone who has it. If I haven't come in contact, there's nothing, of course, I'm a fatalist approach to things that, if I get it, I get it, if I live, I live, if I die, I don't. I don't worry about any of those. But that's just me. And it may not be the way everyone wants to, everyone wants to know so that they won't go. If they are involved and come in contact with someone at their house, they have a mask on, they're in isolation and that person is going to let the people know, I can't see you or whatever, and that will help stop the spread. And that's what we want to do right now is to make everyone so willing to self-isolate and to follow those guidelines that they don't infect the rest of the public.
Right.
If we can do that, we can nip this thing in the bud much faster than just letting people run around everywhere that have it. And it's easy to understand, if you don't have the symptoms, why would you want to be tested? You're going to test negative. And then what good does that do to know you tested negative today, but next week you may come in contact with someone and have it? But that's just.
You're making a good point. It's not just that this is a physical disease, it can cause emotional stress.
It does.
For a very broad audience.
Right, and I think that's, that's, that's the big stress that people are concerned with, I think, is the worry of the unknown, as was said in 1941. The greatest fear we have is.
Fear itself.
Fear itself. And that is true.
One thing I would like to mention from an information standpoint, I've been getting a lot of requests from cities and our public information officer network, the PEN group, about how the state has changed their reporting of numbers. It's because, and, and I haven't been told this, but I've worked in a joint information center before and I can tell you things move fast and keeping up with the information, just doing it here in Volusia County is difficult. These people in Tallahassee in the joint information center are managing the information and sorting it and trying to get it accurate for the entire state and it is coming at them around the clock, fast and furious. So instead of reporting cases on the website by age, gender and county, they've now just begun lumping, you know, how many are female and how many were travel-related and in Volusia County. So just, I've already heard that we're hiding things, we're not hiding things, it's just, it's moving so fast, they want to be accurate and they need to be able to move information faster.
Headlines page three today, six cited, and by the time I got an email from Kevin, seven.
Yeah.
Ms. Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've really been thinking about this and I'm getting the same questions we all are from, from the citizens wanting to know where the location is because of fear and, and the unknown and because these are definitely unprecedented times. And I understand what you're saying and I, but here's the frustration. When we, when we know, this is a storm that's hit us with a name called COVID-19, but when we have a hurricane come and we prepare and we open up the, the EOC, we see maps where it's generated, when a storm front comes through, we see in Volusia County which city it's going to hit first. We see the natural progression as the storm moves. We might see it come through the northern part of the county, but the southern part of the county is maybe only going to get winds or maybe nothing at all. When you look at, look at the Weather Channel, when a front moves through, we see exactly where it is. And I think that's what's missing in all of this, I think that's what our citizens are looking for.
That's the difference of.
Yes, so, so to, I understand the piece where our citizens want to know what county is it in, you know, what city is it in, is it close to me? Those are fair requests that should be disclosed to our citizens.
Agreed, we understand.
And it's frustrating, I was just watching the Weather Channel and I was watching that, you know, how the blue moves over the map, I'm thinking, that's what we do in any other storm or hurricane or nor'easter that hits us.
How close is it to me?
How, how close is it to me? How will it impact me if any? And we're not doing that under the, your banner of what epidemiology study?
No, it's a state law.
State law, okay.
Florida statute.
Understood, but that sounds good at that level, but at implementation where we are at the local level, that's what creates the uncertainty and the uncomfortableness with where we are. And I'm not, I'm not challenging you, please understand.
I understand.
I, I, so I understand, it was just looking at the weather map, I'm like, well, there it is, that's, we normally show the progression of a storm.
And it's predictable.
And it's predictable, correct. But then it blows over too. And when it changes, we change with it, we're not doing that.
If, if they knew what she just explained to us, that if they had come in contact, direct contact with someone who has tested positive, they would have been contacted.
Correct.
And that's to me answers the fear question. If you've been in contact in New Smyrna Beach with someone who had it for three minutes, Department of Health would have already contacted you about your contact with that person. And that should ease their mind, to me, it eases my mind. If you know that it's in Ormond Beach and somebody says, okay, I live in Edgewater, I haven't been to Ormond Beach, I'm not going to get it, is that more comforting? But you don't know that that person that contracted it in Ormond Beach hadn't been to Edgewater. But what you do know is that if you had come in contact, and this is important to me, with someone who has it, close contact, you would already know that and the Department of Health would tell you.
There's one other thing I'll tell you about, and this is really going to muddy the waters, but about the way epidemiology, reportable diseases are reported, they're reported by the county of your residence, not necessarily where you're being treated.
There what?
So.
Go ahead and say that again, what?
So reportable diseases are reported by the county of residence. So I live here in Volusia County, but I am visiting.
From?
No, I am in, I don't know, some other county way across the state, I get sick there, it hits on our record. So I'm counted as a Volusia case because that's my county of residence.
Right, okay.
I agree with Ms. Dennis and I've heard a lot of this, and that state law does stop you from doing it and it's something we have to look at. And I agree fully that you don't identify 2791 Grand Avenue, but say the general areas of the people do know. And it's, it's the fear you're talking about and it's something we're going to have to start looking at and do something about because right now this is probably the most serious thing that we've seen in years and years, if not ever, for fear for the people. And we've got to do something so that we can better inform them and not tie your hands that you can take and give some information that the people are really clamoring for. So I think it's something that we need to start looking at for the next legislative session, that we can clarify it, make it a little simpler for you and for us, because it looks like all of us in government are withholding the information when it's just absolutely restricted from us.
And they see that, and the perception could be that we're withholding the information for other reasons rather than for privacy. So let me give you that Florida statute so that you can write it down in case you want to look it up yourself. It's 381.0031 parentheses six.
Oh, slow down, back up.
381.
Yeah.
Point 0031 parentheses six, I don't know how you're supposed to say that in the legal world, but it's that, Florida statutes. And it's Florida Rule 64D as in dog, dash 3.031. And it's Florida Rule 64D, as in dog, dash 3.036. And that's the one that gets specifics, saying that all information contained in laboratory reports and case reports related to an epidemiological investigation is confidential. So you can enjoy reading the very long language.
Okay. Ms. Post.
I'm still confused as to if we're saying, if we have the Health Department here saying that basically if you're not showing, if you're not any of those criteria, you're basically okay. And if, if the Health Department is not coming to you and saying you were touched by this person, you know, last Tuesday, you're okay. But then I'm, I'm receiving, you know, I'm on the calls with the White House staff. I'm on the calls with the state staff. The White House sent out their guidelines saying, avoid social gatherings, social visits. You know, you're at risk, and your activities increase the risk for others. The, the governor just actually announced as well, just announced, all bars and nightclubs in the state are suspended for 30 days. He also announced, which I guess we'll have to talk about in a minute, the state beaches may not have groups larger than 10 people, and people should practice social distancing while at the beach. But, but when I have, you can see the confusion in the public, right?
Yes, yes.
So we have this giant message saying, you know, we're, we're closing down A, B, and C, and we don't want you to have social visits. We don't want you to be at bars. We don't want you to be at nightclubs. We don't want you to be, you know, at all these different places. But then on the other side, I'm hearing, well, you know, they're identifying Volusia County cases, and some of those aren't even actually physically here in the county, and don't worry about that.
Those are public health actions. That's what public health is doing. The private sector with those labs opens that up for physicians to be able to go ahead and order directly if, through their medical evaluation, they deem that necessary. So it's not as though you can only get it if you're those criteria. It's that anyone who's, you're going to be symptomatic to go to your doctor, and they can order them otherwise. And then we'll start seeing through the investigation, are they linked back?
I got that. But what I'm getting is that, that myself and, and the public and everyone else is getting tremendously mixed messages. So we're getting that, you know, on one side, hey, it's not that big of a deal. And then on the other side, we're, we're...
Oh, goodness.
And now I'm starting to cough. Symptomatic. But, you know, we've got everybody else coming and telling us that, you know, this is an issue. So, so how are we, as elected officials, supposed to be expected to make decisions on, you know, what we're, what we should close and what we shouldn't close? And, you know, all of this greatly affects our economy, lots of different things going on, when we're getting completely conflicting messages?
Patricia Boswell. So we follow the CDC recommendations and have been following CDC recommendations from the beginning regarding COVID-19. CDC has different strategies out there. And the whole entire goal of all of our work is to stop the spread, right? Stop the spread. So how do you do that? Well, initially, we did it through containment efforts. So when we talk about people self-monitoring and self-isolating, that is called containment. That's the strategy used to stop the spread. You came from China. We knew that the disease was spreading in China. You arrived back in the United States. You were told or kept in isolation for 14 days to determine whether or not you were going to exhibit any symptoms and actually end up with the, the disease. Because of what's happened over the course of the last two weeks, remember, March 1st was the first case in Florida. So over the course of the last two weeks, what have we seen? What I reported earlier about the number of cases. We're beginning to move to what is called mitigation. And again, CDC recommendations, they describe mitigation efforts for workplaces, places of worship, schools, employers. So depending on the type of entity we're discussing, there are practices that we can put in place to, again, stop the spread. So the mitigation is now what we're seeing. The efforts of, okay, who's in my workplace? Maybe over 65, may have cancer. How do I get them to be able to work at home to reduce their risk of an exposure, should it happen? So now, what you're seeing with the nursing homes and assistant living facilities and independent care facilities is how do we protect the most vulnerable? Who's the vulnerable population with this disease? Individuals over 65 and people with underlying medical conditions. So these mitigate mitigation strategies are efforts to reduce any harm that would come to the most vulnerable. So I hope that that helps to explain how we, what may seem confusing. We're moving, we're going to continue containment, but now we're working on mitigation. And that's what our, our governor and our president and our elected officials, our CDC and Department of Health have all been talking about this last week. Thank you.
Ms. Gertman.
Thank you, Chair. Do we know, now that you've shared that it's reported by residents or county residents, do we know, since we're such a tourist area and so many travelers, do we know how many are being treated in Volusia? That this is not their county of residence?
When I gave my report, it was, well, everybody that's reported, this is their primary residence. Yeah. So did you ask, they're all, their primary residence is here?
Okay. So it was explained that when it's reported that you have a positive, that it's reported by your residence, your county of residence. So we could have a number of people being treated here in Volusia, but they would not be in Volusia numbers. But they're having Volusia impact, correct? Am I misunderstanding?
No.
They're reported by the state as from another resident. We, we don't have any of those, so it hasn't happened here yet. They're doing the reporting a little differently for this one than they have for the, the normal process. So normally, we wouldn't, we wouldn't list those from out of state. They would only be reported in the state. But I think for this one, they're reporting our residents, by county of residence, and those that are from out of state that are being treated. So here, our Epi team would be working those cases in conjunction with whatever, wherever their home state is. But they would be reported, they're being reported in the state in that category as non-Florida residents. I don't know if they're reported under each county because we don't have any of those. So...
So you're saying we don't have any
At this point.
travelers being treated for
Correct.
COVID-19
Correct.
in Volusia County.
Our numbers are residents.
All right. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Ben?
I don't think this one's been asked. If it's so, I missed it or forgot it. And I'm over 65, so I can forget. But let's just say you had cases in a certain restaurant somewhere that you've all of a sudden seen a spike right there. Can you take and put that restaurant's name out and say, anybody who's been to this restaurant in the last 14 days needs to come see us?
Well, so hepatitis A, and I, just to go, because we're still dealing with hepatitis A, and we had four cases last week. That was a, that was probably where the risk of a spread was highest, is hepatitis A in restaurants.
How many last week?
Four cases last week. And so we were able to get through to this point without having to do a patron notification for restaurants. But that's, that would happen, we were planning to do that in the hepatitis A case, if that was warranted, if it was linked back to a restaurant. So yes, public health has a mechanism to do a patron notification in investigating a disease. If that answers your question?
Let me add to that. I just want to clarify. So if we have an outbreak of salmonella or gastrointestinal illness that's tied back to a restaurant, that affects a lot of people. This is air droplet spread. So you, it would be those people that were in close contact with, who sat at your table or a table close to you. Does that make sense? It's a different mode of transmission. But the answer is yes, if, if we needed to. But usually, it's going to be a very defined number of people within that radius, the six-foot, three-mass.
Well, the part I'm getting at is, you go to a restaurant, not a church, you know who's sitting around you. If I go to a restaurant and sit down, chances are I'm not going to know who's sitting around me. That's what I'm getting at, is if you have somebody there, and, you know, you may know a general area they sat in, but you don't know who I am.
Right.
Can you notify us to say, this happened at a certain restaurant? That's where I'm getting at.
We could.
And then from there, you might limit us out. But can you do that?
We could if, if it was warranted. That's the clause that's in the law that says unless, and it would be for the protection. Keep in mind, our Epi staff would use lots of resources, pull credit cards, to try to figure out who was in the restaurant at the time. But, you know, then you can argue, well, someone pays cash. So that's all part of that investigation. If they feel that they can't get their arms, that containment around those people, then that is an option that they would have.
I think we could all do kind of, all kind of scenarios of the what-ifs. Just don't be in contact with someone. Don't let them sneeze or cough on you. And that's, that's fine. I mean, the transmission is something that people need to understand. I mean, us right here, if you coughed and you had it, and you don't have it, or let's say Jim, Jim coughs, there's a 99.9% chance I'm not going to get it. There's a 90% chance that even if I get it, I may not even know it, that I had it, if I don't get it that bad, since I'm barely a senior citizen and have no health, underlying health issues. Anyway, Jim, do you want, did you want to share some things? Now, Patricia, you, states, don't go anywhere. Y'all, keep your space back there now.
Patricia, I have one more health question.
Good morning, Chair.
I'm sorry.
Kelly, members of the council, Jim Judge, Emergency Management Division.
Ask you in a minute.
Okay.
So while you've heard what the Health Department role is and in our role in managing this incident, as we would any incident in Volusia County, you know, going back to Thursday of last week, Thursday was fairly quiet around the state. Overnight Thursday night into Friday, things changed significantly, a lot of new cases. And along with that, on Friday, we had a press conference. And also in following with the Presidential Declaration, we established a local state of emergency for Volusia County, which covers all of the county. It covers municipalities, everybody in the county. So with that, we went ahead and activated our Emergency Operations Center. But if you walk in there right now, there's hardly anybody in there, and that's because it's not a hurricane. So what we're doing is a virtual EOC activation, meaning that we open up a web EOC portal so our cities can go into the web EOC, put information in there. We can do situation reports. And it also involves information and planning, ESF-8, Health and Medical, with the Health Department, Kevin and his folks with community information. We got Jim Cameron activated, Business and Industry, and already sent Jim quite a bit of information this morning that deals with the Small Business Administration and the loans that are coming out. So the Citizen Information Center is also on standby. So, you know, with Glenn Lopez and, and Jim Sukup in the building with me, we walk down there multiple times a day to check on the phone calls that are coming in, and we're ready to activate that Citizen Information Center, should we need to. Ms. Denny's. Social media, absolutely. We have one staff in Emergency Management dedicated to nothing else but doing social media, and of course, working with Kevin. We're close to 28,000 followers on our Facebook page. And then, of course, that information uploads right to our, our app. Communications really is the role of Emergency Management at this point, in making sure that we're maintaining communications at all levels. So daily calls with the Health Department, and that involves our hospitals, EMS, Emergency Management, and others. Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, we have conference calls with our county leadership, Ms. Suzanne, and also all of our city managers, making sure that we're sharing information with that. Then also, Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, with the Florida Division of Emergency Management, keeping up with everything that's coming out of the state. And again, it changes, just like it changed this morning with a press release from the governor. So we need to keep on top of all of that. Also, on Thursday mornings, we have a conference call with all the cities and with Dana, our HR Director, making sure that everybody's working together on policies and procedures related to COVID-19. Situational calls once a week with the airport, keeping up with them. Also, our Region Five conference calls. And then also, smaller meetings, face-to-face with, with our Public Protection Director, Mr. Pozo, as well as everyone else. So passing along information as we receive it from the Division of Emergency Management, from the State Health Department, from our local Health Department. And again, we have also canceled trainings. We've canceled our quarterly Emergency Management meetings. But then also helping to support, for instance, Lisa Lewis, we've got, we've got voting coming up. They were a little bit short of hand sanitizer. So we made sure that we were able to acquire that hand sanitizer so they'd have the hand sanitizer at all polling places. But then also with the Federal Declaration, we're also putting the word out. And of course, for the county, working with Ryan Osowski, making sure that we're capturing our expenses and especially our overtime related to this event, you know, because at some point in time, hopefully, there will be some reimbursement coming in from the federal government to the counties in dealing with that. So it continues to be fluid. We continue to push information out as quickly as we can as things change. The Virtual Emergency Operations Center activation, I believe, is going to work very well. And that's consistent with other counties and what they're doing as well, so that we're keeping, you know, a limited amount of people in that EOC. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Post.
Well, I, I still had a question for Patricia, actually.
Okay. Let's go to Ms. Denny's.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the, for the good work, Mr. Judge. Question, you mentioned Jim Cameron on the business. I, I hope you called or connected with all the chambers?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. And that's, we have a lead agency for our emergency support functions. So with the Daytona Chamber, they're the lead agency that we selected some years ago. So Jim is our liaison. So then what Jim does is he pushes the information out. Do we send to Jim? Then his role is to push it out to all the chambers. So he has quite a list of people that he shares information with. And an example is just like ESF-8, Health and Medical. The Health Department is the lead for that. So under, under the Health Department, you have the hospitals, you have EMS, and everything medical-related. So with, with the Daytona Chamber of Commerce, with Jim Cameron as our lead for that, as well as Nancy, then they take the information we provide to them, again, with the Small Business Administration, and then they share it with all the other chambers and business community and so on.
Good. Just, just follow up and make sure that that gets done. Thank you for that.
I spoke with Jim at 7:30 this morning, and we'll be following up with him later on today to make sure everything is getting pushed out. I promise.
Chamber Alliance and Team Volusia and a Practitioners Council. So tucked away within, I, tell me, don't, don't say anything. But I'm really hoping that that's on your distribution site, too, and those are included with these.
I will follow up, Mr. Cameron, make sure we've got that covered.
Let's just make point people from Team Volusia, the Chamber Alliance
Okay.
and the Practitioners Council, because that's a pretty wide swath to give to one person in the Daytona Chamber. So let's, if you could, find some point people through all of those and make sure this is being disseminated.
Yes, ma'am, we'll do it.
Thank you.
I feel sure, I know that some of it is because I'm getting information the same from Jim that I get from the Daytona Chamber, and also getting from Orman, and also from New Smyrna Beach. So when you look at your email list, you'll see that you're getting the same information. So I would think that he is, but good to follow up on that.
It never, never hurts to
Never hurts to follow up.
check those lists, because we have found holes before, so we'll do that.
And we don't fill those holes.
Let me call you to make sure we get the list that you're thinking of, to make sure we have it all covered.
You probably, you probably do, but let's err just on the side of caution.
Absolutely. I'd rather do that and talk and make sure we've got everything covered.
Ms. Reeder.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that I pulled up the Florida Department of Health map, and it just changed at 11 o'clock, and we have nine confirmed cases.
Nine in Volusia County? So we went from
As we're talking.
six to seven, to seven to nine. Okie doke. Y'all probably knew that, though. They knew it. They were holding out on us. Ms. Post, now, you have a question for Holly or Patricia?
Patricia. So talking about the actual virus itself, we keep talking about staying six feet from other people. But when we're talking about going to restaurants or any of those places, you know, we're telling people not to touch their own face, but it's by breathing droplets, right? So if someone breathes, breathes, touches their face, touches your credit card, touches your grocery bag, touches any of that, can, can it be transferred in that way? So if, if someone's got something going on, touches their face, touches my credit card...
So if, if someone's got something going on, touches their face, touches my credit card, hands my credit card back to me, can it be transferred in that way?
That would be the community spread that you're seeing throughout the country and the world. So, because we, that's why cleaning surfaces has been a message, just as much as don't touch your face and wash your hands frequently. But cleaning of surfaces is, is something that we have to practice every opportunity to prevent that, because it's not, it's not like hepatitis A, that it doesn't live on surfaces for, you know, an extensive period of time, but yes, if, if I, if I'm exposed to it by someone who has it, who doesn't know it, and they hand me my credit card and I put my hands in my mouth, possibility, my, it's a low risk, but the risk exists, and I think that's why you're seeing some of the mitigation that's happening throughout the country in terms of Disney closing and restaurants closing early, and, you know, there's a lot of different efforts happening to begin to, these mitigation efforts, to begin to really stop the spread, you know? Staying home for 14 days is how we contain the case, and now it's how we work from home for 14 days. So, as not being.
I would just like it to be made very clear the, you know, what exactly we're dealing with and what the potential is.
Yeah, so CDC is the best source of, for all information. I go to that site multiple times a day, review any updated. The clinical picture for this is still unknown to some degree, and it says it right there on CDC. So, that's why we're taking as many precautionary measures and trying to rank risk, high risk versus low risk, and allowing people to take the social responsibility necessary to help stop the spread. This really is about our behavior and our social responsibility related to our own behavior in many cases.
If we could stop the spread from all known cases, it would go away. And we've got 165 now, I guess, now in Florida, and.
173.
Oh, you said up to 173, okay, so more, 173. If all of those were confined and didn't spread anymore, it's over. And maybe that can happen in the next 30 days, and they're working on viruses. Follow safe practices, follow what they say, and 99% of you are going to be okay. Just stay away. And what you, the thing that they don't know is, if someone has it, they don't necessarily spread it to their credit card or to their, anything they touch, unless they have sneezed in their hands or coughed in their hands and put it on there, it has to be that transmitted. And the key, other key fact that we should take away from this is, we have zero community spread at this time in Volusia County, not knowing about the next two that are coming. Hopefully, that's the same.
Yeah, there were links, so what, just to understand how the number went from seven to nine, again, when our Epi staff did that thorough investigation identifying close contacts, they were being monitored, and if they exhibited symptoms, they were tested. Those labs are now coming back the results. So that's why I had said originally, the seven that we talked about, they were either travel-related or a close contact. So again, when you look at the statewide numbers in terms of the number of negative tests, the number of pending tests, the number of people being monitored, they're all in the pipeline, so.
George, you, I guess you want to move on?
Yes, I thought that when she brought up mitigation, that would be a good time for us to talk a little bit about what we're doing for mitigation or managing, managing this risk, because that's what we're here to do. And, uh, so here at the county, at least for the items here through our management team, you know, we've gone ahead and done several things. We've basically enacted a no, no non-essential meetings and events policy right now. Obviously, no conferences or anything, not that there's probably any left out there to attend, but basically bringing everybody home and there to, again, limit their meetings. As we spoke earlier, we're upgrading our capabilities to work from home or to work remotely or to an even conference and meet that way. So today, we did a little test run this morning. We had a little department head meeting, which we purposely did via teleconferencing, just to be in the practice of what we may be doing going forward. We, because we have stopped quite a few camps and things during this period of time and events, I've said that we will refund any money that's gone to these camps, anybody who's paid, and return deposits, especially at the Ocean Center, where we've had many groups cancel, and we have held them harmless for doing such. Same with, now, we don't directly do the fairgrounds, but I've worked with the fairground folks, and they have been very gracious and very cooperative, and they have canceled their events out there, including their very popular Wednesday Farmer's Market. So, other things we've done, we've done, we've, in our cleaning contract, we have the ability to increase the frequency. We also have the ability, if we need it, to go into almost a hazmat-type clean, if we were to need that. But we have already enacted the frequency part of it. We have day porters here in the building that are constantly cleaning all the common surfaces. They've deep cleaned this facility here, the chamber, last night. They'll clean it again after we're done. So we're taking these type of measures throughout. The other thing I've talked to our folks about is during this period of time, things like the Water Department, we're not going to disconnect anybody during this period of time. We'll work with them to make sure they get their payment.
Clarify that, because I have people calling saying, why would you disconnect? It's for those who have not paid their bill that would normally be disconnected.
Right, right, and, and we don't just, just disconnect someone right off the bat. We've already worked with them to get to that point. But there comes a day when that happens, and we're extending that day, and we're working with people through this period of time. Also, if there's any other, you know, either permit issue or penalty, where there's a time limit, we'll extend that time right now during this, this crisis. And what we're trying to do is plan in a two-week increment right now, because it's such a fluid situation, and things may get better, or they may get, you know, a little worse. We want to make sure that we adjust our response according to what's happening. I've asked them to take a look at all their operational plans, again, with an eye towards managing the risk, mitigating the risk, so the idea of exposure to the public and to fellow employees, we'll minimize that. We will look at changing some shifts around, so that we have maybe split shifts or different type work schedules that accommodate that. We still can cover our work time, we may do it with some different shifting that we have. Things like, out at Corrections, he has very special things he has to do, and he has had to limit personal visitation. But we have a very robust video visitation plan, a lot of monies in that. But he, they also are having to take the temperature of everybody coming in there, and if they do have some of the risk factors, they are isolated. So, again, all of our places are doing the same thing in terms of, like, the airport and other places are stepped-up cleaning efforts throughout. And I have asked everyone to take a look at, begin taking a look at their expenses, because I think that we're going to go into a very tough time. We don't know, it has been declared, we don't know where, we all know that it takes a while to get money back from anything like that, so I just think everybody needs to tighten the bell a little bit during this period of time and be cautious, and be cautious. We'll be taking a look at our capital projects and see what needs to go on and what maybe could get pushed off. So, that does leave us with a few things that I know we need to discuss, and there has been some other guidance here that's come out just in the last few minutes. And I have talked directly to some of the cities. The, we do have the issue of, uh, bars and nightclubs and restaurants that has just really, the Governor, while we've been in this meeting, has made a suggestion. He has talked about, uh, closing down bars and, and then, and nightclubs, and then limiting restaurants to certain, like, half-capacity and following social distancing in those restaurants. But I believe it leaves that, how we want to manage that up to us. But that would be for us in the unincorporated county. The cities would handle what would be in their city. So that's something we can talk about today, and then, uh.
Is that a suggestion, George, or is that an actual order? Because what I'm reading is that they are suspended for 30 days.
The bars and nightclubs to be shut down for 30 days, starting at 5:00 PM Tuesday.
So not a recommendation?
But the restaurants, though, it's worded differently.
They have to limit their occupancy numbers.
Right.
And then the beaches, the same thing, that was a, may not have groups larger than 10.
Right, and I was just getting to the beach, with the beach, they've said, at the state beaches, which remain open, but they are asking, or they're saying, groups less than 10. So the people gathering in more than 10, they'll break those groups up.
Mike?
Yes, sir, and Mr. Reckonwall and I have been talking during the meeting. When the Governor may not have signed the executive order yet, but he has had a press conference while we've been meeting, so we're, as soon as we have a copy of that, we'll be able to confirm the details. We're relying on media reports at the moment, and some stories have more detail, details than others. But Mr. Booker is working on it.
Okay. So George, do you want to, while, while you're on that one about the restaurants and bars, do you want to try to see if we can discuss and see what we want to do on those two, two particular things now?
Yeah, I think we can start there if you'd like. We have, again, we don't have as many bars and restaurants in the unincorporated county, but there is a list.
Well, if, if, if the state has ordered that the bars are closed and nightclubs are closed, that supersedes whatever we would say about those two things, right?
Right, that part is, is clear.
There's no need to take any action on those.
On, on bars?
Right.
Right.
So let's look at the restaurant situations, of which we have not that many in Volusia County, but would we want to follow the same guidelines that's issued by the government, recommendations on restaurants? And that can be pretty simply put in, that we can adopt that as a recommendation, or we can follow the, follow the Governor's guidelines, or not, I guess.
Mr. Chair, if I could, um, according to our business tax receipt records, which we compiled late yesterday, we have roughly 105 restaurants that have current business tax receipts. They include a variety of operations, including convenience stores and gas stations, fast food restaurants, and then, of course, more traditional sit-down restaurants. And those would be in our unincorporated areas of the county. We've all been following the press releases here during the course of our meeting. It's not clear to me what the Governor's order with respect to restaurants actually is. In some of these reports, it appears to be recommendations rather than mandates, but I can't with any certainty relay that until we're able to see his order ourselves.
Well, thank you for getting that information. And one thing that I would, would ask that they look at is, if a restaurant needs to stay open for takeout or drive-through service, they should be allowed to do that. I don't know whether that was addressed or not, but.
He appears to have suggested or recommended that restaurants consider going to that type of service protocol.
I think some of them, some of them will, and I know that, I see no reason to close their restaurants.
Well, and, and then, again, yeah.
Ms. Denny's was up, and so I was going to recommend her, but I'm saying, go ahead, Ms. Wheeler.
And then, we have to have clarification, is that open-air restaurants, once they're, you know, there's.
Well, we don't have it.
Yeah, Ms. Wheeler, those are all types of restaurants, just for the council's benefit. That really ranges from your, you know, gas station, convenience store, to your ice cream store, to your fast food restaurant, and then, of course, to our traditional restaurants. And, and we have a variety in each of those categories.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, uh, thank you, Ms. Conchin. Here's, here's my question I was asked. I've been talking with my mayor down New Smyrna Beach and some other electeds. So these are unusual times, so let's say we have a restaurant that wants to do takeout or pull-up. If they, most of them probably don't even have a drive-through window, odds are, especially in the county. I don't, can we, I don't know if there are permitting situation comes into play where you have to have a permit to go outside your restaurant bricks and mortar to set up a table or a tent for people to drive up and pick up meals? If that exists, I'd like to, because these are unusual times, and the feds are overriding policy, the state is overriding policy, I would like to see us override and take away any stumbling block with permitting that would stop our local businesses from conducting business in the limited capacity that they're being constrained to right now. And if that means putting up a tent outside, because they're all, you know, just because they're not in the bricks and mortar, but if they're, if, if that's what the response is, and, and I understand that, but I would like us to get out of the way and let them continue to stay open. And I don't know that that is an issue, but if it is, can we address it now?
I guess, we could address that, I guess the question is, we don't know truly what his recommendation, it's not an order, it's a recommendation.
It's going to come down, so why don't we just, why don't we just, why don't we just address it now?
Well, I was just, I, I agree, I think what we, there's just a few unknowns, but I think we can talk about them. And, and Mr. Irvin's also here to answer the questions. But I think we can take a liberal look, just like you're saying, at things like, maybe parking might be an issue or something in a takeout. I think we could get through something like this. I think another thing you'll see is restaurants that maybe did not have much of an outside presence, you know, trying to, you know, during the good weather anyway, you know, set more tables outside, just giving them, you know, more that they can actually work off of and maintain the six-foot distance that they're looking at. And those would be two areas that I see that could pop up. Mr. Irvin may think of some others. But again, if, if it's the will of this council, I think we can be very liberal during a certain period of time, and I think that's what you'd want to do, is you, you know, make it coincide with some of these other orders, and then they would go back to normal life after that.
Ben?
I agree with Mr. Reckonwall, we're going to need to waive all of this, because we can take this pandemic, whatever you want to call it, it's going to create a recession, that's probably no doubt about that. And if we're not, if we're not careful, we could spread this into a depression.
Yep.
And we've got to do whatever we can to keep our businesses open, and because this, this is a multiple effect from the owners to the employees, all the way down the line, to where we could end up with a lot of open building fronts, it's not about making, but we got to do whatever we can possibly do to keep them fluid and keep them open. So we need to just, I mean, right now, we can say, waive these requirements that they could take, and so, and make it broad, we can always come back to the table. And during these times right now, there's nothing from stopping us to either giving the Chair and the County Manager the ability to act at a moment's notice. And I think most of us, because of what's going on, would come back to these chambers in a moment's notice, in case we had to work on something. But we need to make it so that the Chair and George can act fluidly daily, almost. But we need to make it so that the chair and George can act fluidly daily, almost.
Is that a motion? I'll second it, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, I just say motion.
That's a motion made, seconded by Ms. Wheeler. Mike? Ms. Denny, sorry.
That's okay.
Mike?
Yes, ma, uh, Mr. Chair, um, in Chapter Forty-Six, um, so we have previously authorized some very broad authorities to your manager and chair and your emergency management director. So I think ratifying that today to take those prudent steps to act in the public interest is appropriate.
Motion's been made and seconded to ratify in Chapter Forty-Six to give the, during the emergency, uh, times, authorize the chair and the manager to exercise the steps that are necessary in conducting the business. Any further discussion? Any objection to the motion? The motion passes unanimous. Fred, you still here with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay, anytime you want to say anything, just come on in. All right, thank you.
All right.
Okay, so that takes care of that part of it. Our next meeting is not till April seventh, so that gives us time to work, uh, during these emergency times. That takes care of that section of it. And then let's go ahead and work on what the, the big, uh, situation, which is also economic driver, which is the beach, the beach access, and what we want to do with that. George?
Yeah, uh, as you know, the beaches are far and away our largest park. Um, it's our largest area of outdoor, uh, access and entertainment, uh, for people. It is, uh, of course, we are the world's most accessible beach. It's, uh, you know, nearly fifty miles, uh, long. It's, uh, can be vast in width, depending on, uh, the tide. So, I, I think in following with what, uh, also came out of the governor's office, he did not, uh, say anything about closing the state beaches. He just said that, uh, uh, no groups greater than ten. And I think that's something that, uh, we can look, uh, at, again, to manage the risk, to mitigate what's out there. And I, I think that, you know, again, we have to balance the safety of our people who have to manage that out there. And that's, uh, something that I've discussed with, uh, Director Pozo and Director Manchester. And, uh, also, we, we can't forget about our, our coastal people as well, who have to, uh, work in this environment. And, I mean, they feel that we have ways that we can manage and mitigate that risk. And a lot of it will have, will determine, the behavior, again, of people who go out there can determine that. And I think we have to remember the vast majority of people that go out to the beach, uh, are, are families and people who, uh, would meet in a group ten or less. And, uh, I would hope as a family, they would, uh, spread out a little bit. We, you know, we see a lot of, uh, congestion in a certain areas. We could look at limiting that congestion, just like we're talking about on these restaurants, you know, where we spread out parking. I mean, we don't allow as many cars in an area that we would normally allow today. And, you know, today, we do try to get fit everybody we can into the area that they would like. I would suggest that they, we put out a program to try and reduce congestion in some of those areas. Uh, we could even limit parking in some of the, uh, parking lots that are, are most popular. We could take out some of the parking to help eliminate, uh, what's, you know, the number of people using the park or using the, uh, the beach in front. I've already, uh, directed, uh, for pavilions, uh, when we have pavilion, uh, rentals, uh, reservations at the park, we've already set that at ten. Uh, so we've already conned, started contacting. There are a few groups that had much more than that, and asked them to either limit it to ten when they show or move their event to, uh, a later date in the year. But again, my recommendation, I think we can, we can mitigate and, and, uh, and we can definitely manage the risk. And if people are not cooperative, I can come back to you and say, you know, uh, my team is saying it's not workable. And, and, and I think that's something, uh, I should, uh, we should say to the citizens out there, we need you to help us, we need you to cooperate, so that we can enjoy the outdoors during this time. I think it's important to be able to do that, um, but we need to do it responsibly.
Okay, uh, Ben?
I think, uh, closing the beaches would be a bad precedent. But I think there's things that we can do, from what our county manager said. We could limit parking in the parking lot to two-thirds of the lot. I think we need to limit, and this is for the safety of our lifeguards. I don't know if there's nothing out there now, but limit people to waste deep water so they don't get in trouble unless they're a surfer. Once again, we already know about the groups of ten, break them up, and have emergency orders, so the county manager and the chair can make immediate changes if necessary. I'll make that motion.
Motion is made, so far no second. Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. I, I do think we, we need to keep the beaches open. I think we need to protect the residents and the, the people that are working there and responsible. I think George's suggestion about what we have posted goes in hand in hand. Uh, as you know, may or may not know, my name and number and email was published in the news journal. I've been answering emails since, uh, yesterday on that. I'm not going to give you a count on what people say, but some of the comments are briefly, "My wife and I walk the beach every morning. I'm sixty-seven years old, a veteran, and I want to walk the beach. Don't close the beach." I've had others who have said, "Close it, traffic's too bad." People are saying they enjoy walking on the beach, they enjoy the beach. And the other thing is, uh, it's, are the, is the virus going to live in the saltwater? No. I wish Patricia, she's still here. The virus is not going to live in the saltwater if it's on your skin. It's probably going to wash off. Uh, fresh air and so forth are actually probably one of the better things we can have, rather than being in a confined enclosed area. And I think taking that right away from people to enjoy the outdoors would be har, horrible decision for us at this time, as long as we take the necessary precautions to ensure that we're doing our part to stop the spread, if there could be. And I think that's, that's being done. But, uh, George?
Yeah, and the issue really is the massing of people. And, uh, I think people need to understand too, as far as, uh, when they talk closing the beach, what, what does that really mean? Because, you know, what we mean by that is, uh, closing the ramps. And so there literally are thousands of people who would still come onto the beach, uh, out of their condos and hotels. And, you know, you could easily get the group of ten or twelve people or more out of a hotel or something like that. That's the issue, is trying to break that up, not the actual, uh, ramp part. And, and again, we could look at maybe some sections where we, uh, spread people out purposely. There are other areas, uh, that you can access, uh, with the tides correctly and anything. You can really, um, separate yourself. And I, I do it every, myself, when I go to the, to the beach. I, I'm fortunate enough to have four-wheel drive, and I usually use some of those areas where I can, uh, get away and, um, throw a baseball and do some stuff and not really, uh, affect anybody. So, we do it all the time, and, and I think this is just the time that everyone should be seeking that. And, uh, and again, working with us.
And, Ms. Post?
So I'm, I'm still worried about, um, you know, I'm, I'm very cognizant of the economic downfall that this is, has already created. Uh, talked to quite a few people already who are not, um, who are out of work, uh, because events have gotten canceled, because, um, places are closing, closing early. Um, so that has a tremendous impact, especially in Volusia County, where we have a very high poverty level. Um, that, that has a tremendous ripple-down effect already, I think, on, uh, those wage earners and their family. So I'm, I'm very cognizant of that fact. Uh, I'm very worried about, um, you know, any discussions on closing anything. But on the other side of the coin, I mean, it, it, I feel like either we, we're taking this very seriously and saying, "This is, uh, a possibility that people can get infected." Um, I keep hearing the six-foot radius, but we just discussed, like, at a restaurant, someone, you know, you're, you're consistently in contact with people at the gas station. Uh, everywhere you go, you're within six foot from someone at some point, right? Um, and you're touching other people, you're touching currency, you're touching lots of different things, um, in the public. So, um, I just feel like either, you know, either we should say, "Hey, this is something we should really worry about," or, or not. And I, I feel like we're very much in the middle. And, uh, if we are, so then what, we're only going to target restaurants and nightclubs, and everywhere else is okay? I mean, it's just a very mixed message. And that is the message that I'm getting from my constituents as well. Um, you know, Patricia, can you come up for one second? I have, I have a question. Um, I keep hearing, so on the beach, right? Um, the, the virus can't survive in the saltwater, right?
Uh, it's person-to-person spread.
So, but if you're with people at the beach, or you go to the beach and you're, you know, you're a teenage couple or a couple, and you go with a number of other couples, and you're, you're meeting at the beach and you're having, having your day, that contact can be made that would not normally be made, correct? And it's not going to be killed by you going out and swimming and coming back?
So if you are ill, um, we hope that you stay home. So that is that, the efforts that have been up to this point has been that messaging of, "Stay home if you're ill." Because, quite frankly, it could be flu or some other, uh, illness, not just COVID-19. If you go to the beach with your family members, you would know if they have been, uh, a case or a close contact. So again, we would, they would be isolated or self-monitoring. So at this point...
So wouldn't that be relative to any location, though? I mean, so are we just saying, are we just telling people, "If you're sick, don't go out," so there, now that's covered? So why would we close any place?
That would be, that has been the efforts of containment up to this point. But now the cases... So we went from two cases, oh, last week, to nine cases, right? The good news is, we can re, we can link those cases to their foreign, their international travel or a close contact of a case. But nationally, we're seeing that there's areas of community spread. So you want to be in front of this. You don't want to be making decisions after it's been in the community, because we can't do the EPI investigation at that point. So I think the, the mitigation efforts that are happening in places of worship and in businesses and employees and employers is to prevent community, widespread community spread, because of what we've seen happen in other places in the nation such as Seattle. So I, it is a very, uh, difficult time for elected officials. You know, in terms of making these really hard decisions about what do we do in areas that we have authority over, making this difficult decision about how it's a, and I, I support these gatherings of ten or less, because it, it does two things. You know, those people should be people that you're familiar with.
Well, I think we all need to be on board one way or the other, and, and perhaps you could help, help us with this, as to, we keep talking about community spread and that we don't have community spread here. But that's the whole point of mitigation, is to keep community spread from happening. So the possibility of community spread is, is viable, correct?
And...
And that's the whole point of doing the mitigation.
Yes.
So, I just, I just keep hearing this, uh, being made light of. And, and I want to ensure that the, you know, if, if we're talking about closing places or we're talking about doing certain things, um, I, it doesn't make sense to me to only do those in half of the areas or, um, at specific things. I mean, e, either, either it's a, uh, either it's an issue or it's not, that we need to be worried about. So, um, you know, things like saying, "Well, uh, we can have people gather at the beach, but, because saltwater, um, will kill it." That's a completely opposite message, so, and that's something I've heard from the public as well, so...
I didn't say saltwater would kill it. If you're sick with the virus...
No, that's something I've heard from the public. And so that's, that's what I'm saying. I want to ensure that the message that we're sending out is clear and that we're not, uh, sort of, um, half, uh, half-doing it, um, when we're making these decisions. You know, I, I just don't want to be making these decisions just to say we made a decision. I, I mean, i, if it's an issue, then I think we need to take it very, very seriously. Um, I'm very worried about the economic impact. I'm very, very worried about our low wage earners in our county, who are already losing their jobs. Or at least, you know, partial, um, so, I don't know, I just, I think we, we need to pick one side or the other. Like, is this...
Well, I think the state didn't pick one side or the other. They, they picked a side of closing the bars, restaurants limiting, state beaches open.
That's part of my point as well. So I, I don't, I mean, what's, so we're going to close the restaurant, but now Walgreens? I mean...
I don't think that anybody's closing their restaurants. Restaurants are not being recommended.
I think they're closing bars because, again, of the proximity.
Right.
It's very hard, uh, to get the six-foot in, in a lot of places. And of course, it's indoors versus a restaurant where, again, you typically know the people you're at least with, they're asking people to put six feet between the tables.
I think they're showing four UF students who were positive. That was one of the big reasons as well.
Sure. And, uh, versus being outside at the beach where you, you should be able to get six-foot separation pretty, pretty easily. And, uh, you know, when you're outside, uh, you know, there's always like a perception issue. Uh, but you usually are, in many cases, out on something like that, six feet or more, uh, away, away from each other. And unless it's maybe your spouse or someone like that, and, uh, I think in that case, you probably spend a lot of other time within that six-foot radius as well. So I don't think you've done anything different there. But, uh, that's one of the distinguishing factors. And I don't think anyone's not taking it lightly, uh, at all. In fact, there'll be a lot of work, uh, ahead of us, again, on managing, managing this situation, uh, managing the risk. Uh, that's what we're paid to do, and we do it actually every day on a lot of levels, so... And the other thing I will say is, we are a county that is, is very experienced in handling crises. And, uh, so, again, we will, uh, continue to, um, bring up and add and do things to, to mitigate these risks and handle the situation. Because we're going to also have, besides that, the fallout, as you talked about, and the results of it. And we have to talk about that. Uh, and we may not have to today, but we definitely, it'll be coming on, uh, some of these issues that will occur, unemployment and, uh, you know, and, and services to people. Right now, we're intending on doing everything we can to keep our governmental services operating. And we'll mitigate the risk by, uh, what we're talking about on shift changes, rotating people, holding people back, uh, if, if we need to, to move them in if others get sick. All those types of strategies will be employed, so that we're here to do our job when the people need us most.
Okay, Ms. Denny's?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I guess, right now, I, I don't see anybody making light of anything, especially based on the previous conversation that we, as a council, just voted unanimously on, is to give the chair and, and the manager the ability to, uh, invoke emergency management procedures, especially for our small businesses, removing permits to allow them to stay open, and any hindrances to keep economic development, uh, for our small businesses. So if you're really concerned about, about, uh, the employees and the payroll here in Volusia County, let's keep these businesses open. It's not an all-or-nothing approach. It is indeed, Mr. Manager, mitigating where we are. And I have gone up on social media... And I have gone up on social media last night, asking, should the beaches stay open? It's on my personal page, it has been shared. It's been quite a bit of responses overwhelmingly. The response is, keep the beaches open. And here's a concern, here's an interesting analogy from somebody, because I know down in South Florida, they close the beaches. But here's what's unique about South Florida, they have parking meters. They don't have drivable beaches. So the decision to close their beaches was because of their employees that had to touch those parking meters, and the public that touched those parking meters, that would put coins in them, that made sense. They don't have the ability to just drive on to a beach, get out and stay in their little social distancing area. So that's why South Florida closed. I've also had a lot of citizens ask me, well, can we just keep it, you know, in New Smyrna Beach? Can it just, the beaches in New Smyrna just be for New Smyrna only? Or Daytona just be Daytona only? Or Oremont only, or just Volusia County only? Well, I believe by law, we're not allowed to do that. So, but, Mr. Dyer, can you answer that? Is it possible to close our beaches to just Volusia County residents? Can we do that by law?
We cannot discriminate on the basis of residency with access to the beaches.
And that's because...
That our public facilities must be made available to the public regardless of residency.
And that's because the beach is federally...
Federally regulated, and rights of the public, case law, the way it's been established, do not discriminate on the basis of where you live.
And that's why I was told that. I think we need to state that for our citizens in Volusia County who feel inundated, because I know in New Smyrna Beach, 44 is backed up past 95, because everybody's going to the beach on these beautiful days, and because Disney shut down, and all the theme parks in Orlando are shut down. That's the reality of where we are right now. It is, it's our reality, even if Disney was open, 44 is still backed up to 95, because everybody comes to our beaches. So there's that concern, because it's a federal mandate. We can't close it to just, to just Volusia County, or just to New Smyrna Beach. And the other concern, and this is real, this is real even on regular times, is that our citizens, if we close it, people will still come, they'll still try to get access to the beach, which means they will be parking on our side streets everywhere. You want to talk congestion? We will have to have more in the cities, because it will be, it will be, they will be parking in the cities within their territory. There will be the parking on the properties and in the driveways and easements and right-of-ways will be overrun, more so than they are now. We still have that code enforcement issue, but that will be at fever pitch. So we will, we'll do one thing, but set off another, unfortunately. But my concern too, and I've thought about this, I read the letter that our unions sent out, our lifeguards, and they're concerned, and fair enough, about their exposure to this during this time. So maybe, Mr. Rettinwald, we need to, it appears we need to identify some high-risk employees that we've got. If our lifeguards are currently high-risk, which we know that's the population. So if we have any high-risk employees, I don't know if we can assign them somewhere else, or... But let's protect them, let's take them.
Fine, now we'll be consistent with what we're going to do throughout the organization. That is, we met this morning on that very part of that mitigation strategy. We will work with our HR department and people who have high-risk characteristics. We can definitely either move them to another area. We'll work on, you know, a plan for what to do. But it'll be hard to tell a, tell a commute the lifeguard, but we'll figure out some other things we can do.
Well, certainly, from the letter that we all received, they're concerned. So let's just make sure you protect them and find out who they are.
Absolutely. We have to protect all of our first responders, and we will. And we'll provide the necessary equipment, and we'll also, any extra training, we'll also provide that as well. And, you know, they're on the front line of this, and we understand that, and we will work with them. We've already talked about other things they can do to limit their contact with the public so that they can focus on truly the life-saving part of it, and/or the public health part of it in terms of keeping groups, you know, down to a minimum.
I'll have hand sanitizer, you'll make sure that they have everything that they need.
We will.
To accomplish that. And I had also made the comment on my social media post, and just discussion to start the discussion, well, maybe the answer is to lift the tolls. That's not the answer. Those started discussion purposes, I no longer would, I will not recommend, I would not support that in a motion. Because our local pass holders, annual pass holders are usually our Volusia County residents that will really take a look at our beach. And another, here's another interesting piece that I got from several other, from our public protection sector, is that if we close the beach, we're going to be using our public service employees, probably calls to homes. Because if we quarantine, I mean, the fresh air, we need a mental health break as well as a physical health break. And we have that right here in Volusia County. We have a beautiful asset called the beach. And I think if we do look at the groups of 10 or less, and the social distancing, spread out, just everybody spread out. And if we hit a capacity level, and Mr. Rettinwald, you can work with your staff, I'm sure, to decide when that capacity, when we hit capacity issues, then we're at capacity. And I think that's, that's the balance we need to hit with our citizens to keep the beach open, watch capacity, use social distancing, self-governing. Self-governing is the highest form of government. Self-governing, and just close the beaches when we're at capacity for the security of all. But in fact, our, we have beach vendors, right?
Yes.
So they'll still be working there. I mean, my goodness. Let's keep our economy in motion. Let's keep the, the economy is just motion flowing, it's just dollars flowing through our economy, it's money in motion. That's the best definition we have of our economy. So let's try to do that. We will do that. And should that change, like you said, you'll bring it back to council?
Yes.
And we'll let you, we will let you make that hard decision. But can I go back, Mr. Chair, Mr. Manager, just on something? I want to share that came in from our great partner, at the Daytona Chamber. Everybody's listening, just so you know, today. Everybody's listening. But Nancy Kiefer wanted to make sure that we all know that they do indeed have a list of all the chambers, and they share one consistent message that includes all agencies. They have updated their list regularly, and they, like they do during hurricanes, including some staff changes at some chambers. And their listing also includes the Hospitality Association, Real Estate Manufacturers Association, the malls, building association, Career Source, and others. So there's a very comprehensive approach taking place. And thank you, Nancy Kiefer, for clarifying that. I think that's the good news and all the good work that just, it just happens. So that's all I have, Mr. Chair. But I'm going to support, and Mr. Johnson, the only reason I didn't second your motion, we can't keep anybody pass away deep water. How often do you go to the beach? We can send these kids out there on a boogie board or surfboard. So what are we going to, send our lifeguards out, say you've gone too far, and then bring them back in? But that's the only, that's the only reason I didn't, I didn't second that.
Okay, Ms. Gertman.
Thank you, Chair. So I wonder, is this, would this be self-governing? Or would we have like an emergency order as far as distancing? And what authority will the staff have to manage that?
George. Michael, Michael has...
It'd be my recommendation, consistent with the emergency declaration that came out Friday, to have those directives in writing. And the manager would have that authority on your existing ordinance during the state of local emergency. And I know in conversations that Mr. Rettinwald and Ms. Concha and I have been having, that would be the intent, to have those in writing.
Thank you. My other question, a lot of the feedback that I received from residents spoke of an impact of the sun, the open air, and the saltwater, right? So do we have someone who can speak to, is that a reality? Or is that just perception that the open air and the sun, the sand, the saltwater can have an impact on the virus? There's a strong perception of that, and if someone can speak to it, so it's on the record.
You must be referencing Bob's...
No, I received numerous...
Okay. Patricia, I think she answered, the saltwater will not kill...
I understand that, but it's to go beyond that, so...
Patricia Boswell, Florida Department of Health. So this is a virus? So think about the fact that you're infected with the virus. Many of what we've seen in the past have been related to influenza, what you know as flu. This one is coronavirus. So if I go, if I am a case, a known case, positive for coronavirus, I will have that. What they're, what, again, CDC is saying, there's a lot of clinical uncertainty still. But right now, everything suggests for 14 days, I could be infected with it. That's the 14 days of isolation that's being expected from any known case or close contacts with the self-monitoring. Regardless of where I am, I am infected for that length of time. But some people are, have mild symptoms. We, you know, the cases that we've worked with, after a couple of days, they're feeling really well again. But again, they stay isolated for 14 days.
Thank you. I just want somebody to speak to that on the record, so it, you know, addresses it. So thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay. I think where we are, did you want to create a written statement of the policy that George is going to put into effect on the operation of the beach?
Yes.
I have some more discussion.
Pardon?
I have some more discussion.
It just popped up when I was just asking a question, it wasn't before I started asking that.
I understand that, I'm just pointing out, I have some discussion.
No, that was just, that wasn't saying we're going to do it right now. I just was asking, Ms. Gertman had mentioned what she felt like, Ms. Post.
So we mentioned the parking meters down south for the beaches, but we have toll booths. So we have the actual booths where a person, a physical person, is talking with you and, you know, leaning into your car and doing all of these things. And for us to say that even if you have the annual pass, or you have the thing on your dashboard, they're still having conversation back and forth to provide the, because they have to go through the list of the rules and all of that kind of stuff. So there is still that, very close contact communication with thousands and thousands of people coming in and out of county on a regular basis with these toll booth people. So is that a concern, Patricia? And then on, well, let me just ask that question, and then I have another one. And then you're also giving the credit card back and forth.
The county managers spoken to many of the efforts that the county departments and workforce will be taking regarding mitigation. And I believe that those types of strategies could work in terms of how that process of entering on the ramp and getting on the beach with that toll booth employee could be changed to reduce any, you know, lower the risk of coming into contact. Again, that person-to-person spread is more of a close contact over an extended period of time versus me passing by the podium if I was a case.
Okay. And then the, so if this is a county ordinance, George, or Mike, I don't know which one wants to respond, but... So people violating this order, that would be a violation of county ordinance. So what would be the consequence? And I'd also like to hear from Ray Manchester as to how this is, how he's planning on mitigating, or how this affects beach patrol, or, and how would he enforce that?
Ray. I was just...
I know you thought about this, so give me your, give me your thoughts.
Ray Manchester, Beach Services Director. Yeah, actually, as we're speaking about this, I'm being told by staff that the beach is absolutely packed in the core areas of Daytona and New Smyrna. So our message to our staff is to practice the social distancing, pick your battles. We have PAE equipment, we have loudspeakers, we're doing that. And we also have a lot of rescues going on, too. So breaking up crowds or groups of 10 or more is going to be a new challenge for us, but something that we can do through those types of means right there. When it comes to protecting our first responders, we actually went out last night and confirmed that we had all the equipment in place, and that everybody has the tools that they need, contrary to some of the words that were put out there. So, you know, we are on the beach, we are in an atmosphere, an open atmosphere, which I think we can use to our advantage, but one that we're also prepared for to deal with the groups that we're seeing, because we are seeing a lot.
And so the main response to breaking up the groups of more than 10 would be to get on the loudspeaker and ask them to disperse?
We would start with that, too. And I think what we're going to do, and what Toll is already doing, Jessica's here, is that some of the messaging that you mentioned with the toll takers, it would be to tell people, the ones in the vehicles that come down, to practice some of your own social distancing. Or, and, you know, we're not going to cram people in like sardines, we're not going to do that. So we're going to be proactive in those measures, and encouraging people to spread out also.
Mike. Yes, Ms. Post, in response to your question. So in your emergency management ordinance, it provides that any orders that are issued by the county during that time, violations would be a second-degree misdemeanor, if they were enforced in that manner.
And I'm assuming you're not prepared to make those arrests?
We will do what we have to do, but that would be a last resort.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. Would not mandate that you do that, but...
That's, that's my point, yeah. Okay, thanks.
Okay. I think it's very important to realize how the disease is transferred, transmitted. It's from droplets from your mouth or nose, if you're infected, going into contact with someone else. And if passing of a credit card or a piece of money, and the person uses the Purell or the hand sanitizer after and before each transaction, it's not likely to happen. But we can't stop living our lives by worrying about whether or not we take a coin or a piece of money from someone. I know it's the likelihood, and first of all, we don't know how long something would live, and someone would have had to sneeze on it, coughed on it, to put it on there. And then it didn't get wiped off, or drop off, or decide to fly somewhere else. But it's not airborne, so it doesn't fly. So, anyway, Ms. Wheeler.
I can't remember if we got this information, we have an overload of information. And I do want to make sure that we can keep our beaches open and everyone be safe. And we're praying, as we are through this whole thing, that everyone takes responsibility for not passing things on. So keep your distance, wash your hands, do the sensible things. This isn't about all of us making all the rules for nothing. You know, you all have to conform in this, critically important. But what I wanted to ask you, Patricia, if you wouldn't mind, one more question. You might have already said it, but I want to emphasize it again. How long does that last on a surface?
Not very long at all, you know.
I mean, I was told at one time, 10 minutes or something like that.
Holly keeps all these little details in her mind, and mine just...
So it's a new virus, and they're learning more and more about it every day. The current information that it's anywhere from two, several hours to up to two days, but it depends on the type of surface, hard surface versus soft surface. It's easier to kill, though, because you can use normal cleaning products. You don't have to have like hepatitis A requires something very strong, this does not. That doesn't necessarily help you make a decision, but it's, it does have a...
It's not just hits, and it's... It's not just hits and it's done with, you know, I did wanna emphasize that.
To put it into contrast, hepatitis A is up to three months, so this one is up to a couple of days.
Okay.
Okay, counsel. Do we need to create wording for what we have been discussing? If we do, what my suggestion is that we have Michael create that we take lunch or a break, come back with written things in front of us instead of doing it on the fly, if that's okay? So, and then we can continue the rest of the council meeting after that, unless, George, you have anything other to add, it's your time now.
No, sir.
Okay, let's do that. Mike will prepare a written summation of what we have gone over, and we will have that for discussion when we come back after lunch, which we can be, can we be back at 1:30 or not? 1:40?
Are we gonna find a restaurant open or will, can we get somebody to deliver?
Well, we have to sit so, we should, we thought we would be finished by noon today. I knew that this discussion would take a little bit longer than that. So, let's say it's 12:40, 1:40, 2 o'clock at the best. We will resume at 2 o'clock. Fred, you got that? Yep, he said yes. Okay, counsel recessed at 2 o'clock.
Good afternoon. It is 2:00. And due to some late arriving information that we have from the Governor's office, we will reconvene back at 2:15 in order, so we can get the information correct. And we'll be back here at 2:15. The council meeting is recessed until 2:15.
We're on mute, folks.
Hello?
Okay, we got you. We're live.
Hey Fred, Jeff, play that song again.
There we go, sorry.
Okay, Jeff, are we good to go? It is 2:15. We'll go ahead and reconvene the March 17th meeting of the County Council. And we will continue. George, do you have the information or Michael?
Yeah, we can get started. I think first off, some of what we were getting ready to do has been changed a little bit by the executive order 20-68 that has come from the Office of the Governor. I believe you've all received a copy. And so, it addresses the issues we were just talking about directly. So, of course, what they've done as far as bars, pubs, and nightclubs pursuant to the sections quoted here on the Florida statutes, any licensee authorized to sell alcoholic beverages for consumption on premises that derive more than 50% of its gross revenue from the sale of alcoholic beverages shall suspend all sale of alcoholic beverages for 30 days from the date of this order effective 5:00 p.m. today, March 17, 2020. So, that has been handled directly by the state. They go on to talk about that the Department of Business and Professional Regulation shall utilize its authorities under state law to further implement and enforce the provisions of this section. They say they shall take additional measures with respect to bars, pubs, and nightclubs as necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. Section 2, beaches, pursuant to Section 252.365K, Florida statutes, I direct parties accessing public beaches in the state of Florida to follow the CDC guideline by limiting their gatherings to no more than 10 persons, distancing themselves from other parties by 6 feet, and support beach closures at the discretion of local authorities. Section 3 on restaurants, using same section, but 5G of the Florida statutes, a restaurant shall immediately limit its occupancy to 50% of its current building occupancy pursuant to same statute. Restaurants should follow the CDC guidance by ensuring at a minimum a 6-foot distance between any group of patrons and limiting the parties to no more than 10 individuals. And again, it tells how they will enforce through the Department of Business Regulations. It also gives a little bit further guidelines for restaurants on how they would handle employees. I will not go into that other than to say that they have several requirements that all restaurants will have to follow in order to ensure the health of its patrons by monitoring their employees. So, that's the state statute, so they have handled that part for us. What I have before you, Mr. Dyer has put out, is our first extension of our local state of emergency. We're limited to seven days at a time for doing this, so we've taken advantage of you being here today and adding the seven more days. And if you choose to... And if you choose to pass that, then we also have behind that directive of emergency measures that will be implemented that a little bit more specifically define what we're going to do here on the beach.
Okay, let's go ahead and get a motion to extend the first extension of the emergency declaration.
I'm moved.
Motion made by Post, seconded by Wheeler, to extend the state of local emergency related to the coronavirus disease till March 24th. Any discussion? Any objection to that motion? That motion passes unanimous. Any objection? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimous. Now, we can move to the next one. George?
And the next one, again, this is more for, under that authority, we will put out a directive following the state guideline, or the state actually statute that has been issued here. Parties accessing the beaches of Volusia County should limit their gatherings to no more than 10 persons, distancing themselves from other parties by six feet. And then, the other section, the manager, as designated, shall have the authority to limit vehicular access to the beach, beach approaches, and county-owned off-beach parking areas when the lack of available space undermines the ability to meet the requirements for social distancing described above. So, in other words, should it get crowded in those areas, and we could not achieve that, then we would close a ramp or close the parking in that particular area to make sure that we can spread the people out in that section of the beach.
Everyone has that motion made by Johnson, seconded by?
Second.
Gurtman. Any discussion on the first directive of emergency measures to be implemented by the County of Volusia effective March 17th, 5:00 p.m. today? Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing no objection, the motion passes unanimous. That's it. Michael?
Okay.
Nope, it's not.
Nothing further. Thank you.
Okay, George, that was your finish? That's it? Okay, Fred? You're up. Dr. Lowry?
Okay, there we go. I'm sorry, I pushed the mute button.
Closing comments.
Just want to thank Jeff for making it possible for me to be there today from the House of the Lepers. Anyway, good job. I think we did the right thing today. Thank you. I'm good.
Okay, Ms. Post.
Okay. Just wanted to point out that the, I was looking for the date on here, but the FDOT meeting in reference to the roundabout, or in reference to the roadway at the ramp at ISB and A1A has been extended by FDOT. It was scheduled, I think, for the 31st, and so that's been postponed. Got back from, and Megan, if you could put these pictures up here. I went to Washington, DC. I was up there during the last council meeting with the National Association of Counties, and was just very, very excited to represent Volusia County in laying the wreath at the tomb of the Unknown Soldier at Arlington Cemetery. So, in a long career in law enforcement, I created and led an honor guard, and I have to tell you guys, for me, this is my bucket list times a million. So, I could never do anything on my bucket list again and be very happy, but very proud to represent in that way. Aside from that, was able to do a lot of work. It happened to be Muscular District Feud Awareness Day also at the Capitol when I was up there, and I was able to meet with a group of them to discuss transportation issues. As most of you know, I'm also the chair of the Transportation Disadvantaged Board. Worked on that a little bit. Worked on a number of veteran services initiatives. Worked, I talked with George about this, worked on Medicaid and made exclusion policy issues for corrections, and just a number of other things. But I think very, a very beneficial trip. Certainly was able to accomplish a lot and bring back, so looking forward to rolling out a number of things in regards to that. Let's see. The only thing I would have concern about, and I just wanted to mention before we end the day, is it is spring break in Volusia County, and we really didn't address that too much in concerns with the coronavirus, so I don't know if we can touch on that at all. Also, I'd love to hear from Community Services. I had reached out as well. Lots of people reaching out concerned about their wages with all of these shutdowns, events being canceled, lots of different things. Not seeing a whole lot from Community Services' side, even, you know, on social media, postings, press releases, nothing. So, all of the information that I've been getting has been from other entities. Would love to see that from the county's side. Anything that we could be shooting out to the residents to help them and to get them to truly understand the needs. One of the things I saw was Comcast is providing free Wi-Fi to students that are home, so I don't know if anybody has any more information on that. Just a number of things. The schools, I was concerned about the schools typically providing the breakfast and lunch to a lot of students, and then with spring break extended, that was no longer being provided, so was looking for information on that, found that information, and was able to forward it. But would love to see way more information on the Community Services' side for the public as to, you know, what's available to them now, and anything that we can do to alleviate some of these, not only to alleviate their fears, but to provide them with some resources. This is on? Go ahead.
Is it on now? Okay. Donna Butler, Community Services Director. We did not have a phone call from the state giving us any guidance until yesterday, and then they finally sent us a whole list of guidelines that we have to follow, but it does allow us to increase the amount of funds that we can give to folks that do qualify. So, for LIHEP, that is 150% of poverty guidelines. For CSBG, it's 125%. If they meet that criteria, and they have been negatively impacted by the coronavirus, we can give them up to $2,000 if they meet the criteria. So, the other thing we're trying to do is, they have given us a waiver so that folks that want to not come into our offices, and we're starting to set up appointments for folks to either come in or call. We're pushing towards calling, but some people might not be comfortable with that, so we'll still have that available. But they will be able to call and give us all their information, and we have a waiver form that we can sign essentially on their behalf, so that they do not have to provide a signature for their file to move forward. So, we're looking at doing that Monday. Both Community Assistance and Veteran Services are moving to appointments only, just so that we don't have the crowds in our lobbies. We're going to do everything we can to serve everybody. We'll take them by phone if needed, but we want to make sure that people aren't, our lobbies are pretty small, so, you know, trying to encourage them to come right when their appointment is, not too early and sit around. So, we're trying to get that out, and a press release is going out later today on that. So, the biggest news that we have is that we can't increase the amount that we provide people to up to $2,000. So, I think that will be a big help, but it's a one-time fix. That's what state guidelines are. That's what the county guidelines are, is that it's a one-time fix, emergency assistance.
And that's for people who were impacted by this event?
Right. And people that weren't impacted, they're not restricted from still coming and asking for the regular combination of CSBG or LIHEP dollars, but you have to have been negatively impacted by the storm. And we've got a list of criteria that we're using to say, hey, did you have to stay home with your children? Did you lose your job, or were your hours reduced? So, all those things, were you told by your doctor you need to stay home for 14 days? So, all those things are on there, and we can check the box, and then that makes them eligible for the additional assistance over and beyond what they've gotten now.
Okay. I'd still would also love to see more information, either if you can connect with Kevin, or however we can work that to try and be shooting out the resources. I know you had mentioned getting in touch with a lot of your nonprofit partners, but I know you've done that, but I don't know anything that you've done on that. So, and it's wonderful information for us to assist you in shooting out, because the public is asking us those questions. So, any, anything that we can be doing, and I haven't seen Kevin shooting anything out on that specific aspect, so.
That's because we just gathered the information today. So, we're going to be working with him. We have a schedule to sit down with him as soon as we're done with the council meeting. We've already asked that the information about our offices being available by appointment only go out, and that we'll be glad to take phone calls over office visits and the increasing amount of money. So, that will be out there. We just received information from the nonprofits. We've been trying to contact them. Many of them are closing their offices. They have limited staff, so they're actually closing. When we have information about extra resources they will provide, that's what we'll give out. I don't think we want to promote the things that they're doing to help their employees as much as what assistance they could give the folks that are negatively impacted by Corona.
Okay. I just, I went a couple days trying to get information on the schools, and I know that, I know we're not school board, but I was able to find that information and shoot that out.
The school board specifically asked us not to share until they had done their press release.
Okay. Well, that's how I saw it and forwarded it. But the utility, also utility disconnects for non-payment. I wanted to thank you to the city of Daytona Beach. As soon as all this started, I reached out to all of my connected with the city managers within the cities within my district. Daytona Beach, Ormond Beach, Holly Hill, they all just made the decision to not charge for non-payments. They would not disconnect for non-payment. And so, I immediately called George and said, hey, are we on this as well? And he was. But those kinds of things would be wonderful if we could shoot out. I don't see Kevin in here.
He's right.
Oh, hi, Kevin. You were behind her. But if, you know, if those kinds of things, FPNL also making that decision, I mean, that's pretty huge for especially a lot of residents in the poverty areas.
Duke did as well. All three of the folks that we have relationships with, or agencies, power agencies that we have relationships with, have waived that as well.
But Kevin, if we could really work to shoot, you know, if we could be the, if we could be the middle person for helping to shoot out that information to citizens within Volusia County, that would be wonderful, because they're really looking for that information. They're asking us, and, you know, I think it's, it behooves us to be providing that information to them. Thank you.
Ms. Wheeler?
I don't, I don't have much. I did attend the ISB Coalition Meeting on the 9th at Embry-Riddle. That was a very informative meeting. We had the city, we had the chambers, we had Embry-Riddle, we had FDOT, the secretary that was, he was there. So, I was able to speak on behalf of the, on my behalf, but I was speaking out of the county's concern of beach access for us at that east section of the roundabout. And that is really our only play in that, is that making sure that we can get the people on and off that bridge, at that very, at that access, at that very, very important, highest-used entrance to the beach. So, that concern, that meeting will be canceled, and, I mean, it is postponed right now, and I just got a letter from the secretary yesterday, and he's giving me ways to connect, to get information as it comes out. So, I will be continuing to follow through on that. And basically, just had a really, really busy week doing census presentations, but all of that's going to come to a screeching halt now, so I guess I'll catch up on my paperwork. Thank you.
Ms. Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple things. This legislative session, I know it's just ended, and I think they may be going back for some budget work here, but I had a couple calls as soon as the session ended, and on the way home, from somebody, Volusia County, from our Reasonable Assurance Plan, our 10th Street Ariel Canal. We have $500,000, I think, Mr. Rectoron-Wald, I called you immediately, from Representative Lee and Senator Hudson, that went through, and our Pioneer Trail Roundabout, another $500,000 from Representative Federoff and Senator Wright on that one. And with water quality, these aren't our projects, but we talk about, and John Booker, thanks for the executive summary, I know it's real quick. The septic to sewer conversion and reducing nutrient levels, whether it's in our spring shed, it's the river, or within our cities, a lot of money was appropriated for Volusia with our city's Port Orange. They got $250,000. Oak Hill Sewer retrofit got another $200,000 from Representative Santiago. Deltona's water reclamation, $150,000. Ponce Inlet Septic to Sewer Conversion, $125,000. The Deland Spring Shed Initiative, $100,000. Daytona Flood Mitigation, $200,000. The Berry Stormwater Infrastructure, $300,000. An Orange City Nutrient Reduction, $500,000. So, water quality is still a priority at the state level with our state representatives and senators and this good work that we're going forward. So, the project, what we do with our Reasonable Assurance projects and all of our plans, our cities are doing a tremendous job, too, doing their part. So, I think this is very encouraging, and anybody that thinks that septic to sewer is not real and it's not being funded is living in a linear, linear world somewhere. So, it's very much alive, it's very much being funded. So, thank you for our state reps and senators and our governor for continuing to support this. The only thing I want to, I want to piggyback on what Councilwoman Wheeler said, too. I also attended the East ISB meeting about the roundabout or signalization, whatever you want to call it down there, and Secretary Purdue, FDOT Secretary, stated very clearly that they're only at 60% of the design phase. So, if, and you were there, too, thank you Suzanne for showing, and other staff members, is that even should, if there is a change, it shouldn't necessarily delay the project. So, the only concern that I had, and Councilwoman Wheeler did a tremendous job representing the county's protection of the East ISB ramp, our beach ramp there, because that's the number-one utilized ramp in the county, number one. And the concern is if you put a roundabout there, what that's going to do to the integrity of the beach approach? And I don't care if they put in a signal or a roundabout. The only thing that I can, that I'm concerned about is keeping that beach ramp open. And you remember a couple years ago, when, and I was at the, that East ISB meeting as chair of the TPO, I was there as a chair at the time, and FDOT and the previous secretary, or two secretaries, anyway, previous secretary was there. We're having this meeting, and they were talking about the roundabout, and they were talking about East ISB, and I'm like, oh, my gosh, what about the beach approach? So, when I asked about our beach approach, I was politely told that wasn't a discussion within our purview or that they were going to have, and I said it a little louder, took off my chair, chair's head of the TPO, and said, okay, now I'm going to tap our county council on beach approach. And I remember coming back after that meeting and throwing up the red flag to my colleagues saying, hey, we've got an issue here at East ISB because they put that roundabout in. We cannot compromise access to the number-one utilized beach ramp in Volusia County. So, I went to the East ISB meeting, said that on the record, and also at that time, which is unfortunately what I do sometimes, just said, I'm going to come back to my council and ask for a resolution of support, because they will be taking testimony, and they have delayed. The secretary has told me that they did indeed delay the meeting, I think it was March 30th or 31st, on that, taking testimony for that. But before you is some language that I asked staff to work up that just states our position in that we don't want delay. There's no, and the secretary said he doesn't see a reason for delay on that project, but it basically says to the secretary that Volusia County appreciates the opportunity to comment on the East ISB improvement. The county does not wish to cause any delay to the project's schedule, however, maintaining and preserving full beach access for residents and visitors of the ISB approach is of paramount importance to the county council. And then, it goes on to give some statistics on the percentages in the daily passes. So, therefore, it is critical to protect the access and integrity of Volusia County's number-one beach ramp, and that the adjacent intersection function as efficiently and effectively as possible. So, council, I'd like you to take a look at that, and if we could approve that to be read and sent into the record there. But what was really interesting in that meeting, the gentleman from Halifax Health that was on the panel with you, Billy was on the panel, I was just in the audience, he made the interesting comment that the concern about roundabouts is getting a He made the interesting comment that the concern about roundabouts is getting emergency vehicles through there and how they could get stuck and will they have access? So all of a sudden now, there's the real, it might look good in a design and engineering, but at implementation stage, thank goodness we're having this conversation before a final decision is made. So the other concern is, or was, or is, so if we just left it as signalization there, which is, exists currently, would it be a resurf, you know, turn into just a resurfacing project? Well, a resurfacing project to us and a resurfacing project to the DOT is completely different. They're still going to put the curbs and they're still going to do all the enhancements. They're still going to do all the, right George?
Yeah, well, the secretary, my understanding at the meeting was that when asked, interim Secretary Perdue committed that they were still to do the rest of the project, which, and that's correct. Typically the DOT, when they do resurfacing, they will upgrade a lot of their other structures. Where in the county, while we do do some drainage and other things, ours is a little bit more of just a resurfacing. But in their case, they do a lot more with the sidewalks, curbs, gutters and other things. And my understanding is that they're still on board with the other items that the city had requested.
Right, so with that, council, you, did council receive this prior to today's meeting?
Yeah, we had it.
You didn't receive it? Okay, I've just had so many emails, I'm sorry. So with that, I'm going to move a motion, council, that we send this letter to Secretary Perdue just that states that our request to keep that beach ramp open.
And accessible. I mean, efficiently.
Well, the letter will speak to that.
Yeah.
Yes.
I second it.
Motion is made and seconded that we send the letter. Right now, it's currently just with my signature, but I think we should have everyone, if everyone's okay with having your name, so it would be from the council. Okay?
Yes.
You okay with that, Fred?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay. Thank you, Deb. Okay, we'll move to Ms. Gertman. Oh, did we vote on this? We had a motion, second, discussion. Fred said, okay, any objection to that? Here and none. Vote should pass, as you know. I got nods from everybody, but it passed. There we go. Now then, Ms. Gertman.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. What I wanted to mention first is that I did receive my census last week. Census invitation to go online. My understanding is there were also those who received a hard copy. So that came as a little bit of a surprise to us. But what we're reassured is that whichever of the three methods, whether it's online via, by that copy or by phone, all those options are open. So please complete it and complete it early and complete it completely. So just wanted to put that out there. And you can go to 2020census.gov if there's any follow-up questions. I also want to thank John Booker and ask the public to reach out to the governor's office, let them know how much we appreciate and encourage his signature on this budget. That it includes those water projects that Councilwoman Denny's mentioned, but also a fully funded Sadowski Fund for affordable housing, which is awesome. Unheard of, but grateful. Also $16.9 million for Bethune-Cookman, which is also huge and hopefully will assist with those needs. So I think those are critical and it's critical for us to let them know how much we appreciate those efforts for Volusia County. I did have one other question based on an earlier concern. And that is whether or not we should have a decorum rule for what the expectation is from the dais to the public. So I know the earlier concern we had with a poster. I've seen other posters and I don't know that everyone has been treated equally. So I think if we define what those expectations are and when someone wants to see what our rule or process is for that, we have that available and we're not making it up on the fly.
Okay, I will address my, I have not seen other posters that I have not asked to be put down. I've had people with placards, holding them up and I've asked them not to hold them up. That's been my rule in every year that every place that I've operated, we don't allow people to hold things up and to do that and to take up the seats and to impair the vision. We do have a rule that if it's, something that could be blocking the vision of others. And that would have had we had a full house.
So is there a rule? Is there a documented rule or is that, because I heard you tell her that it was your rule. And I mean, we're a council, so.
I'm enforcing the rule that is stated. Michael, can you share that?
Sure. In chapter two of your Code of Ordinances, you adopt, you have a general rules of procedure that include courtesy to all. They're broad. You also, in state law, it empowers the council to maintain orderly conduct in meetings. So the discretion can be exercised as long as it's reasonable. If you, there are some jurisdictions that have adopted more specific procedures or rules as to decorum, which the council could consider as well.
I just want to put it out there for something that we want to consider to be more consistent. So it doesn't look like we're.
Okay, can, if you can cite something where I was inconsistent on that, Ms. Gertman, that'd be fine. But I don't think you can.
Well, I know there was several groups that were here and had signs. Either it was for the septic-to-s sewer, or it was for the barn, or it was for Sunrail. And there were signs. And no, they weren't as large and visible as that. But again, do we have an ordinance for what size the sign is? Or, and like I said, I just want us to be consistent and be able to have the public, be able to respond and hold us accountable for what our rule is, should we have a rule. But if we kind of make it up on the fly, then how does someone know what that expectation is?
Okay, I just, I mean, I can't recall those and I don't know, we have video evidence of that of where we've had people with large signs, holding them up. I do recall that I have asked people not to wave their signs or flags. On that one, I just asked if she would put it down and she said no. And then I asked her if she would move it to the back where it wouldn't be blocking and she did. And then she didn't want to move it. And then actually Kevin and Mr. Pozo both went out and told her she was welcome to come in and leave the sign placed in the back. And she chose not to.
I agree. But what I also heard her ask for was our rule or process, so.
I use that as my discretion as the chair. If you want to leave it to the chair, whoever the next chair may be or whoever this chair is, if you want to say, I can't do that, I'll abide by what y'all say. If you say that we can allow signs, placards and waving, then I'll abide by it. But this is a place to conduct county business. And I don't think that is a place to put a four-foot sign up that's visibly sitting there. And everything I have to look at and see people, that's all that I see on a plate. So I can't see if there happened to be somebody back there. So if you want to allow it.
Just given my concern.
I know, I understand.
So we have the rest of the board to determine if they feel it's consistent or if they feel that it should be, you know, responded to in the moment, then so be it. But I wanted to.
We don't have it that often, but I do think we should have a certain amount of decorum. And she was defiant as she just said, can I put it somewhere else? That would have been fine. And I think by the nature of her complaint, we can see that she wasn't really wanting to cooperate anyway. But that's beside the point. What, council, you want to leave it to one-on-one, to leave it to discretion? Or do you want to say you can't, you can have signs? If we get down to where you can't have signs, we don't have them that often. I thought that I had been fair in that, I was not singling her out. There was no intention of my part to try to single it out. Council, you want to leave it the way it is? You want to say people can't have signs, they can't wave signs? Do you want to get into the definition? Or do you want to leave it to the discretion of the chair? And then if you want to complain at that, or voice your opinion at that time, not complain and say, Mr. Chair, I think we should leave them, then that's fine.
I don't really think it's a matter of sign or no sign. I would just love to see everybody treated equally that comes into the, from the public.
I apologize for letting any sign, I apologize for letting anyone come in with a sign and obstruct the.
Mr. Chair, I'm not sure that I've ever seen you not. I've seen you every time a sign comes in, you've asked them to lower them. In my opinion, I don't remember a time that it was different, but that could be just me.
If I'm not fair, call me out on it. How about that?
I think that's what she's doing.
Okay, you did. I responded and if, but this time I thought I was consistent. But if in the future someone come in with a bunch of signs and placards and I don't ask them to wave and say, Mr. Chair, remember that March 17th date? You made her put them down, you're going to make these people put them down? I say, yes, council, I will. You've only got 289 days left and 18 meetings. Just counting. Okay. Mr. Johnson, you are.
Well, I was just going to comment on what you were commenting on.
It's, you have the floor.
And, you know, naturally we have to be fair and try to be fair all the way around, but we have and we've seen it quite often, where these things take a life of their own. And the next thing you know, you have the gallery disrupting meetings all the way around with signs. And we've seen this in some of the different commissions. And we want to make sure that we don't get there. I know sometimes we could probably, all of us be a little bit more tolerant or a little sweeter in our dispositions. But it's a tough job that you've got to try to run the chair. And, you know, I don't always agree, but that's a tough job right there. And I want to make sure that we don't have runaway council meetings from the crowd to where it's, and where does it start? You've got to start putting your foot down and not allow the community to take over the meeting in a manner that starts getting disrespectful. So you have to take, and sometimes go a little bit above and beyond on how you handle to make sure that this doesn't happen. So I don't think we need to take anything written in stone. I think it needs to be a case, a case basis. I don't think it's wrong that we're asking to move the signs out of the way a little bit so that it's not in the way. So overall, I support the fact of that we have to take and make sure that the people in the gallery abide by rules.
Anything else? It's your time. We're down to your closing comments. There's only one left. That's me. Is that it? All right. Just found out from the Department of Agriculture that Commissioner Nikki Fried has the, where they all have got the same thing on the school lunches. I knew that that was coming. Volusia will go into effect, I think, the 23rd or something like that, where there will be pickup places for the children to have lunches. So those that are entitled, and I think we have almost 60% that are entitled to lunches twice a day and whether or not they're going to pick them up, be able to pick them up for a week or for a period, I think it's going to be where they can pick them up for a week. My daughter taught last year where 100% of her students required to reduce to free lunches twice a day. So we know what they deal with and having these extra week off or even a week off puts a hardship on parents and I'm glad that they see that we're going to do that. I do feel that some more is going to be coming down from the federal government also on reimbursement of some of these costs from some of the, was it $15 billion that was put into the fund that was signed and then not signed and maybe signed. So at least they're looking at that. We found out just the effects today at lunch, trying to get lunch. It's not as easy as you think now. Where we were going to eat lunch was closed to takeout only. It's not going to be fun, folks. And they were abiding by it. So I asked one of the hostesses, I said, is this going to be for now? She said, no, we just showed up to work today and have no work other than takeout. It's going to be hard on these people. That's the biggest thing that bothers me right now, not whether I'm going to get the virus or not. We're doing what we can to contain it. But the people that are going to be affected that live week to week or month to month that are going to be suffering, I'm glad that there's something being done in some way. So I'm glad to know that the schools are going to be helped and there also will be money coming from that fund that will help take care of people who are out of work from the federal government. The hope is if we can find a way to stopgap some of those that need help in the meantime. Some people can't wait a month to get help. So that's, that's the thing that bothers me as well. One other thing that we know today is that by regulation, chapter 381.00316119.07, that we, the county council, do not have access nor are we allowed to, if we had it, to locations of individuals. We don't have that information. We're not being secretive on it. We do not have it. It's given out, it was given out and put into a system so that if through the 911 operator, that number of, if a name comes in or a number comes in, that person is in a isolation situation, the responders will know that that's a place where that they're going that has isolation of the coronavirus. And that's what it's for. We can only give you what we can give you. One sheriff out of, I guess we have 67 or 66 in the state of Florida, whatever it is, decided to use that information. I'm sorry, we don't have it. But I will tell you this, I can tell you that there's probably about 7.3 billion possible people that who may get it. That's the people in the world. So we all are susceptible, we're getting it. And I'm sorry that we can't give it to you. We don't have it by state law. And we're going to abide by state law and that's what we said we're going to do. I appreciate everyone working today on getting through a couple of very delicate situations on the virus and the beach. And with that, at 2:56, we will adjourn the meeting.